Okay, everyone. Welcome to our April 23 city council meeting. Glad you came. Please rise and salute the flag with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Councilmember Sterns.
What?
Councilmember Sterns.
No, I'm waiting for you to get to Instrom.
Mayor Proto Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Sakla.
Here.
Councilmember Instrom.
Yeah.
Mayor Morder.
I'm here, thank you. Okay, folks, be sure to let us know if you aren't hearing us. We're still fine tuning the acoustics, so look, would appreciate it if you waved your hand or something if you're not hearing us correctly. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to begin the meeting tonight with reading a couple of proclamations. One on Bike to Work and School and the other on Older Americans Month 2018. So first, the Bike to Work. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been a utilitarian, economical, environmentally sound and effective means of personal transportation, recreation, and fitness. And the city of Mount Shasta encourages the use of bicycles as a means of transportation. And the city of Mount Shasta recognizes the bicycle as a legitimate roadway vehicle and therefore is entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roadway facilities in California, except highways constructed to interstate standards. And the city of Mount Shasta encourages the increased use of the bicycle benefiting all citizens of Mount Shasta by improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, decreasing the use of and dependence upon finite energy sources and fostering exercise. And the city of Mount Shasta recognizing the use of bicycles as a viable mode of transportation endeavors to promote safe and responsible bicycling and is committed to incorporating the development of bicycle facilities in the vision for vitalizing downtown Mount Shasta. And the League of American Bicyclists and the mayor encourage all citizens to ride their bikes to work, to the store, to the park, around their neighborhoods, and with friends and family to promote the personal and societal benefits achieved from bicycling. Now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the mayor of the city of Mount Shasta that the month of May be known as Bicycle Month, the week of May 14th to 18th as Bicycle to Work Week, and May 18th, 2018, as Bicycle to Work Day. And lastly, May 9th, 2018, as Elementary and Middle School Bicycle to Work Day. Okay, thank you. Lots of ways to celebrate the bicycle. Let's get ourselves out of our cars, onto our feet or our bikes. Okay, this second proclamation is on behalf of Older Americans Month 2018. Whereas the Mount Shasta community includes countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community. And the city of Mount Shasta is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers. And we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being no matter your age. And whereas our city and its residents can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older Americans, older adults in community planning, events, and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now, therefore, the mayor and council members of the city of Mount Shasta do hereby proclaim May 2018 to also be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community. Okay, thank you for your kind attention. Okay, now is the time that we have set aside for public comment. For those of you who'd like to share your thoughts with us during a three-minute period about things that are not on the agenda or you may find in the consent agenda only, which is on page two of your agenda. So we ask you to come up and share your name first and then you have three minutes to talk to us. And Juliana will give you a yellow light at the point when you need to be winding down your comment. I appreciate if you self-facilitate that. And just a reminder, as part of our public comment process, we don't, we can't because of the Brown Act, but we don't have a dialogue that happens. You're welcome to share your point and then we listen, but we cannot take any action on it. So hopefully that'll help with any expectations you may have. No action tonight on whatever's said tonight. Okay, I have three people who signed up to speak and then if there are those of you who, at the end of this period of time, decide that you have something you'd like to offer, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you and you can come up, okay? Okay, let's begin with Crystal Aston.
Good evening. I think most everyone knows me, but my name is Crystal Aston and I'm a lifelong community member of Mount Shasta and I am a field coordinator with the Ford Family Foundation. And I'm here this evening to personally invite members of council, city staff, and the public to an upcoming free community movie night that we're going to be showing at the Sisson Museum. It is on May 24th. That's a Thursday, so you have plenty of time to get it on your calendar. And we're going to be showing the documentary, If You Build It: Shop Class Redefined. And it's supported by the foundation along with the Siskiyou Occupational Advancement Roadmap, or SOAR Coalition. And we're going to be using this free movie night to spark conversation about college and career pathways, providing our youth with skills and education that allows them to be employable and have successful careers here in Siskiyou County and to support and contribute to our economy through youth and adult partnerships. So it's going to be a very inspirational night. You'll have an opportunity to learn about what the students are producing here at Mount Shasta High School that are available for sale that I don't think the public is even aware of and really have a good dialogue about what these youth and adult partnerships could look like in the future here in our community while enjoying a free movie and dinner is provided together. I have some flyers on the back table and I've made sure that one is available for each of the members of council. And I'm happy to come back and talk more about this if there's any interest and to also talk more with members of council in the community about how the foundation can support community building and community conversations here in Mount Shasta and in Siskiyou County. So I hope that all of you can make it and all of the folks that are here today can put this on your calendar. It's going to be a really great evening. And I'll leave a poster, a larger one, behind in case there's a place for it somewhere at City Hall. All right? Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Quick question.
Quick question.
Yes.
Yeah, are you familiar with the Startup Weekend?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yes, and this will be a great opportunity to plug that event as well.
Yeah, to kind of get those together, yeah.
Yep, we work together.
Cool.
Thank you.
And what time is it, Crystal?
It is going to be on Thursday, May 24th, from 5:30 until 8 o'clock. And again, dinner is provided as part of this event.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So next I have is Pam. And you have indicated PC Pam? I'm not sure what you mean by that. Ah. That means Planning Commission to me.
Not politically correct. Could have been that too. Hello, everyone. And I thought I'd speak up tonight because there are a lot of people here from the community. I'd just like to make an announcement about another upcoming event. This Thursday, April 26th, we are holding the Second Rethink Downtown Event from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. and it will be at 211 North Mount Shasta Boulevard at the new Exper- ExperSheer Workplace. And again, the Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee has been planning this and I just wanted to give a reminder for everyone to come down and continue the conversation on what we want to see in our community and particularly in the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. So that's 5:00 to 7:00 this Thursday at ExperSheer Workspace, 211 Mount Shasta Boulevard. There's, I remember there are refreshments served? Yeah. Okay, wait, next is Vicki Gold.
Could you turn the speaker up just a little bit?
Vicki Gold, Mount Shasta. I didn't come, I didn't intend to speak tonight, but when I saw so few people had signed up, I thought I'd better put my name down. I hope everybody will speak. I was trying to become informed after I saw a letter from Dennis that went out on Inma Smag. And so I watched the whole hearing this morning. Actually woke up in the middle of the night and was told, "You better go downstairs and listen to this hearing. Something's wrong." So I'm here to get some information. I know you can't answer anything this evening, but it seems to me that nobody could really understand what was happening. There are many different opinions about the library. The library is extremely important. I love the comments about LEED. I love the comments about, you know, wanting to do the very best you can to keep the budget under control. But what I observed was that the people who were speaking to it left during the break and then Paul changed his mind. And as far as I could tell, that was a violation of the Brown Act, to not repost and to listen again. Because I think the, it wasn't clear to me what was done. I really am confused and I know that there are issues and I realize I heard that the contract was already signed the next day. But it has the appearance of impropriety to have the people who are the most involved be told that decision is made and thank you, we'll take a 10-minute break and then come right back and have the one person, it's perfectly legal to change your mind. I mean, it's a woman's priority. It should be a man's as well. But the fact is that suddenly we were dealing with something else and I am very confused about it. So I think you really need to review the Brown Act regulations because I think you're in violation. And it didn't feel comfortable to me. I saw Nick's points about having presented his figures and not wanting to have that shared with other people. He had very valid points. But something is amiss in having everybody who was involved leave and think that one decision had been made to postpone for a month or two weeks or whatever it would be and then to find out later that that wasn't the case. So I'm just asking for you to be cautious about that because I am confused. I'm really, really confused and I think the library is extremely important. I would like to have heard from Bruce. He said there were some grants that might be available so that we could do the LEED or we could do some of these refinements later. But to just make the decision like that without the full involvement of the public and announcement just feels wrong to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Vicki. So others?
Can we address that in council and staff comment?
As always.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Evelyn Callis. I've been a member of the board of the Friends of Libraries since 2006 and I'm currently as president. And we want to speak to the feelings of the Friends of Library about what has been happening. Friends of Library have been supporting our community library for many, many years. And I think you're all aware of that. In 2010, when the county crashed, we became the full financial and staff support of the library for almost two years. And following that, we provided the management and half of the daily staff during the next four years since all those volunteer efforts conserved the income from our tax revenue so that we were enabled to go forward with making expansion plans with the money that we put away. In October last year, the design plans that had been prepared for the expansion were featured at our community open house that we annually have on Harvest Day. And then they were also featured in the publicity for our November Fund Drive. More than 80 citizens and businesses in our community responded to our 2017 Fund Drives, contributing more than $11,000 in support of our plans and our goals. The Friends this year have budgeted $10,000 for improvements for the existing building. We have dedicated half of our cash reserves to provide for furnishing and landscaping the expansion. All of these funds have come from our community donors who have devotedly supported the library for these many years. I think we can say that the community is in support of the plans that the Friends of Library have put forth. From personal experience, I can tell you that obtaining a functional building for professional services requires collaboration between those professionals and the architect designer who provides the plans and signs off on them. The Friends of Library are looking to the city council for a firm commitment to such collaboration of the library staff in the process of planning the double thing size of our building to provide an appropriate library expansion for our community. I think all of you have probably had the experience of renting or buying a house and finding that it didn't suit your needs and purposes. You either deplored it, remodeled it, or moved. And if you built one, you sat down with the builder and you worked for many hours on the planning. Our staff and our executive director and the building committee have put in many hours on the plans for this building. We want to see that they go forward as designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Evelyn. Other comments? Is Dennis here? Is Dennis Johnson here? I'm sorry. Here you are.
I'm on the board of the Boys and Girls Club.
What's your name?
My name is Linda Stremmel.
Thank you.
I'm also a member of Mount Shasta Rotary. And Mount Shasta Rotary, with my Rotary hat on, has supported the library over the years. First, our club built the library and then we expanded it. And I don't remember the years. I apologize. We've bought computers for the library through grant funds from Rotary International or from our district. And we have painted the outside of the library. We've put new windows in the library and contributed to recarpeting the library. So Mount Shasta Rotary stands firmly behind the library and take that hat off, put this one on. As a member of the board of the Boys and Girls Club, I'm really excited about the fact that the Boys and Girls Club has been housed at Sisson in some extra classrooms there. And we kind of have a collection of services in that area. We have the Garden Greenway from Siskiyou Land Trust where the kids can, kids from Boys and Girls Club and kids from Sisson can go across the street and participate in growing fruits and vegetables. There's big plants for this area, both through Rotary and through the Siskiyou Land Trust. And the library is kind of part of this collection of services that are, that can well serve our youth. Do you have any questions about those services and the plans for the future?
That's not the way it works, Linda, but I certainly don't. I'm in the middle of it. But it's not the way it works.
Sorry. So I'll try to anticipate what your questions would be. The Boys and Girls Club is rather new to the town, but it's thriving and we have over 200 members. We have an after-school program and we have a summer program that lasts all day. Do I have a time limit?
Yes, you do. There are three-minute limits and you're winding down right now.
Got it.
It's prosperous, so you're at 2:36.
Okay, well, good. So anyway, I just see this as like a campus-wide offering and any expansion that you do on the library will be utilized by the community at large and the youth in particular.
I do have a question. Thank you. So as far as you know, what you can, what you just spoke about, the involvement or the neighborhood buildings, the middle school, Sisson School, and the land trust, and we also have the field nearby.
Yes.
These are all very adjacent to the library. Do you know whether that relationship to the other neighbors were considered as part of the design? Was that part of the conversation?
The design of the library.
Yeah, the architecture.
Of course.
Of course, you know?
That's my opinion. I've only been to one of the meetings for the library, Friends of the Library, but they have like space for after-school activities for kids and for community meetings. And maybe Dennis can speak to this better.
Yeah.
Thank you. And actually, Barbara, you stretched it a little bit and the questions of the speaker should be just for clarification of something you said rather than a continuing subject of, I understand why you did it, but
Oh.
just in terms of protocol here.
Okay.
This is not, this is not about a conversation in others.
All right.
Linda, thank you. Thank you very much for underscoring the importance of it to all the entities. Thank you. Next?
Good evening. Merle Anderson, 808 Mormon Way. And I'm also a member of the LTAC Committee. So three minutes, that's, I think, more time than I got last, you know, two weeks ago when we came, Dennis and I came, to present LTAC recommendations to the city council. And one of the things I did point out during the time that I had was we had written a report about LTAC recommendations. They were not in your packet. That's the way things go sometimes. I know we had the ad hoc committee discuss it and we assumed it was going to get into your packet, so somewhere it didn't. Which is fine. Then the council continued the discussion after a little bit of discussion because we thought that we were going to come back, get a chance to present the recommendations that LTAC had. But that wasn't the case. I think the main thing I want to say at this point is that the library community, to me, seems more than just advisory. Just, they're more, they're a group that's dedicated to the library. They work very hard and passionately to build the library, to keep it going. They shouldn't be dismissed as amateurs or people that have, don't have a grand vision of what a library should be. They, it's a traditional library in many respects and it needs to be expanded physically and enhanced in that regard. And the Friends of Library and the other library supporters that make up that library community are very passionate about that. And thus, the planning process over the last several years try to lay out, do a needs assessment with the librarian or the management of the library and anticipate what's needed for the library and propose that. The main thing I think I want to get to is that these are partners in the project. They're not just advisory, community people, and this is top-down, city-down to the rest of the community. These are partners in this project and they need to be treated as partners. They need to be, collaboration is certainly a word, but it's a partnership. And partners should concur with the project as it goes forward. If they're going to be involved in developing the library and staffing it as it expands and furnishing it, they need to be treated as partners. There comes a time when they either concur with what is being proposed or they say, "We're no longer partners." You know, is the city going to do it by themselves? Is the community out of it? So please, treat them as partners in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, I would prefer, if you want, if you want to signal your agreement, an agreement we've had in past meetings is you just wave it. And the reason I want to explain that is a lot, that doesn't sit very well with people. To me, it's very important that someone who wants to express a minority opinion doesn't feel unsafe to do so because of the, obviously, the preponderance of support for an opposite position. That can be very intimidating. So it's good for us to know that you agree with what's being said, but rather than be quite so vocal or loud about it, I prefer that you just wave your hands. And that's certainly the signal to us and isn't intimidating. So thank you. Thank you, Merle. Yes?
Hi, my name is Debbie DeRocher and I just wanted to express, after reading Dennis's letter and talking to members of the LTAC Committee, how I was really shocked in the whole process that you can make a decision not even seeing the proposal, knowing how many hours they put in with a professional architect donating his time. And these are our funds, taxpayers' money, that we've saved over the years that this tax has been in effect. And it's frustrating that you would award a contract for $200,000 when maybe we could do it with a lot less if you looked at the work that had already been done. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Debbie. All right. Nice to see the waves. Thank you. Yes, next?
Okay, Kim Salga, Mount Shasta. I want to echo your first comment, Vicki's concern about the appearance of the vote at the end of the meeting last time. I think that because of a lot of discussion over use of library funds, over moving the library, over making it a different library, over taking it away from its ideal location for the children next to the school and doing something to enhance downtown, there's been a lot of talk over the past several months about how the city council would like to use these funds to make a better town or make a better library. What I'd like to do is challenge the council to really commit to using the library funds in the way that LTAC and Friends of the Library intend to make a better library in the place where it is and pay attention to the intense planning that they have put together to propose this. And please be very careful. The city's watching you. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Someone else? Dennis had asked to be last, so I agreed with that.
My name is Julie Bennett. I've lived in this community for 40 years and the library is one of the biggest parts of the community that I access the most, of the community that I access the most. More than any of the downtown businesses, more than anything else in our community except for the wilderness and the out-of-doors. I think it's an essential part of our community. And whether or not the actions that took place at the last council meeting is a violation of the Brown Act or not, it has a huge impact on your reputations and the reputation of the council in this community. And this may be politically incorrect and I apologize ahead of time, but my feeling was one of shock, but also one of disbelief, that it seemed very underhanded to me and I'm very dismayed that it happened. I don't know what could have changed Paul's mind in a 10-minute period of time when he had certainly a lot of information being on the ad hoc committee. So, that is one of the things that confuses me. The other thing I would like to mention is that it was said in one of our board meetings that the cameras were turned off during the break, which apparently seems as if it's unprecedented.
Julie, I'm sorry, what has been turned off?
The cameras, your cameras, the monitors were turned off during the break, which according to information that I have received, was not precedent. It just leaves a question in everybody's mind, why? I think for the sake of transparency that the council really needs to, as people have said, be very careful because violation of the Brown Act can cause other implications and other actions, which I don't think anybody wants really to see happen. The other thing I would like to comment about is, as our last person spoke to, the approval of the contract is going to end up costing more money than was anticipated and hoped for, which I think is very unfortunate. And the last thing I would like to comment on is the matter of the applause. And I have to say, as a grown-up, it seems really silly to me, but I understand. My question is, I'm assuming that your cameras are pointed at you so that the people who watch this on television at a later date can see you. They cannot see the audience and their reaction by waving a hand. So, I think to me, that is not wanting to disclose what the members of the audience are thinking and feeling. And I think that there's something wrong with that. So, I would ask you to give that some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Well, I can tell there's a fair amount of anger in the crowd and that is a point I had never thought of. Julie, I appreciate your raising it. Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Nadine Ayalo. I was involved a few years ago when the libraries were in trouble to raise awareness through the community, to get the library back on its feet. And thanks to the help of a number of people in the community, the library is now standing tall in most of the county. The reason why I bring that up is because the community's involvement with the library is really important. You can't have one without the other and they're really, they're partnership, they're bonded together. And the money that was raised for, in order for the library to have the funds needed to do what they needed is, should be decided by the library alone and, and the community. And the city should have, as far as I feel in this process, should be the last ones to be involved. So, I just wanted to say that. I also wanted to say that the applause that we made was not a sign of anger, it was a sign of agreement.
Oh, no, I understand. Just now when I had asked that it not be done, it was done anyway. That's, that's a, that's a reaction, so, yeah. I understand.
My name is Nancy Van Sustren. I live in Mount Shasta. Six years ago, the City Council put the library tax on the ballot in an effort to keep our library open. The community of Mount Shasta passed that tax by an overwhelming 76%. The Friends of the Library ran the library from 2010 to 2016. Because of their volunteer efforts, they managed to save $400,000 for a much-needed library expansion. After the passage of the library tax, LTAC and respected local professional volunteers began working on the expansion design. That design was presented to the council last April. We were moving forward. We thought we were working along with you. We thought we were on the same page. We trusted you. At the last council meeting, despite our efforts, the mayor stated that the whole process had been a mess. Your actions after the break only made that mess much, much worse. You didn't follow your own protocols. You didn't follow the Rosenberg's rule of order for a reconsideration of a vote. This is how this process is supposed to work. A council member who voted with the majority moves to reconsider the vote. It is then seconded. An opportunity is provided for the public and the council members to comment. A vote is taken. Only then can you make a new motion. That didn't happen. The hasty and erroneous process you used to change your vote at the break makes me and others wonder if serial discussions took place during the break. I don't know where we go from here, but you should know, we are not going away, we are not giving up. We want representatives from LTAC and Friends of the Library involved every step of the way as active partners, not as a passive audience. We are also here to ask that you put to rest persistent rumors that library funds will be diverted for other projects like a city council chamber, by stating publicly that you will not allow that to happen. For many decades, the Mount Shasta community has spent thousands of volunteer hours to keep the library open and to make the library bigger and better. We are part of that continuum. We feel our recent efforts have been demeaned and dismissed. You should know that we will do whatever it takes to protect the library funds and to ensure that the library expansion reflects the wants and needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
My name is Bonnie Thomas and I think it's obvious that the council has made a mistake, which is easily corrected, and I thank you very much for your work improving the city and also helping our local library in many ways. I just wanted to put in two cents that I am part of the volunteer literacy program for the county library system. I coordinate the tutors at the Mount Shasta library. And we use the library all the time for tutoring. We currently have six students with six separate tutors and we're having a difficult time finding space in the library where we can work. There are not enough tables, there's not private areas where we can talk and not disturb the other patrons. So, this addition is very important to me and the literacy program. And I also can say that I know Chris Snyder is a wonderful designer because he designed our home. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. For the, for the purposes of those of you who are viewing from afar, we've got a lot of hands waving in response to Bonnie's comment. And for more transparency, there have actually been applause and hands waving at every comment that's been shared, for those of you who may be wondering.
Hi, my name's Robin Weaver and I actually just want to second what Bonnie was saying just now. As a mother of a student who receives tutoring, who is part of the charter school group that is here in Mount Shasta, oftentimes my child needs a place to meet with her educational facilitator and they rarely find room outside of local coffee shops, the library with children running around or adults not wanting to hear a conversation about a history paper, et cetera. So, to have smaller meeting rooms would greatly improve life for not only my child, but many other children that need to have meetings with their teachers one-on-one. Thank you. And thanks for your work.
Thank you, Robin. Lots more hands. Okay. Others of you, now's your chance before Dennis gets up. Okay, Dennis. Now, I've, and by the way, Merle, I know that we miscommunicated last time, but for the benefit of those of you who weren't able to watch it, I did break our protocol and I gave Dennis and you, as well as Nick Riddle, as long as you wanted to talk at the last meeting. So, it wasn't as if you weren't able to talk at all. And I did apologize for the miscommunication about the expectation that you would give a presentation. That wasn't communicated, but I did try and make up for it. And I just agree to give Dennis six minutes, double the time, hopefully to share his perspective in advance of the LTAC meeting coming up this week. Thank you, Dennis.
All right. Thank you. My name is Dennis Johnson. I'm the chairman of LTAC and like everybody else that was involved in last week and two weeks ago meeting, I was extremely disappointed to find out that, the process that occurred during that meeting. We were asked by the City Council at a previous meeting to set up an ad hoc committee, which consisted of Bruce, the, the city manager, and consisted of two of the city, John and Paul, and it also consisted of Courtney, who is our librarian and ED, and consisted of myself and Merle from LTAC. We met twice and out of that, out of that King, we presented to the city and the ad hoc committee our recommendations concerning engineering services and library expansion. The problem is that these have never seen the light of day because of the city's failure to present them and make them part of the packet when the ad hoc committee's recommendation, which was to accept our proposal, was debated. And so, three of the City Council members, those that didn't participate in the ad hoc committee, hadn't even seen this pamphlet and, and the backup materials that they were debating at last week's, or at the previous session. And so, one thing I would like to do is present this packet and make sure that it becomes part of the public record. You owe that to the community, to make this part of the public record, so they can understand what our proposal was. Instead, we debated it without any understanding of what that proposal meant. And it's not just the proposal, it's the backup materials, which answer the questions that some City Council members have been asking. It represents 13 public meetings, beginning in 2013, that were conducted on the, on what the library was, was going to be consisted of. It also consists of the incredible work that our librarian and ED has put in to looking into best practices, taking courses and so on, and her whole building plan committee. And then it, it represents the building plans that were developed by an LTAC committee, building committee, which consisted of Michael Murray, myself, to, and Courtney, and, and basically the free services of the local designer, Chris Snyder. And, and so, that packet and all that information, which verifies the community effort that's gone into this project for the last five years, was not even considered in last meeting's debate. That's very, very disappointing to me that that, that didn't include. And it, it represents a fairly large transgression on what should have been the protocols. You know, usually does, City Council is not usually asked to debate issues when they haven't even seen the proposal or any of the backup documents. So, I would like to present those documents tonight to you and make sure that they get presented in the public, public forum and that they're represented there. The other, I should break, I should briefly summarize what was in our proposal. Our proposal merely asked for a couple of things. And this has been LTAC's stance essentially from the beginning. First of all, that the work that's already been done by the community be recognized in the contract so that the community, so that the individual who's chosen to finish the design project does not repeat work that's already been done. There's still plenty of work to be done, nobody was denying that, but we need, we need not to pay for work that's already been done by the community. In fact, that's the very reason that we did this process, is so that we could reduce the costs. Basically, without, and the other cost, the other element of it was that once that was determined, and so the RFP was, was made clear to the potential bidders, what was actually required of them, which was not clear in the original RFP. The RFP asked them for everything and, and that we could have a competitive bid process. That is our other responsibility in LTAC, is to make advice to you as to how this community money, which has been very hard-earned, is to be spent. And you don't have to agree with our recommendations, but you do have an obligation to give them a fair and unbiased debate. That did not occur last week. And so, we're very, very, I'm very, very disappointed about the whole process. And essentially, what you did is you told the community by your actions that we're really not interested in what you've done. I know that was not your intention in many of your cases, but that's what the final result was. And so, we need to now talk about how we're going to move forward with this process. And so, LTAC has their next meeting on next Thursday. It'll be at the community or at the school board meeting room next to the library. It, it goes at 2:00. One of the things on our agenda is for them to, is for LTAC to give its response to what, what occurred. And the library, they have provided me, Bruce has provided us with a library expansion project coordination team, with how they want to move on for this process. We will, we will use this as our basic thing to move on. We may not agree with a lot of what's in here and we will certainly give our recommendations to you on what we think needs to be in here and how the money needs to be spent in the future. Again, that's our job, is to be advisory and to represent the community. So, I encourage anybody that wants to participate in that process to show up at our meeting. And I also encourage you to take our recommendations a little more seriously than you did at the last meeting.
Dennis, can you tell us what time the meeting is again?
The meeting is at 2:00.
Oh, at 2:00.
2:00 in the afternoon, next, this Thursday, the 26th, at the, at the school meeting room next to the library.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would also ask Catherine if she could include this in the packet and send it out to all LTAC members, so that they have some preview of what they're going to be looking at and debating.
I thought it went out.
Not, not this. We've, we've, I don't think it's been distributed to LTAC.
With Courtney's transmitter.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to distribute again. I also ask that this, as long, as well as these documents and the plans, be included in the public, in the public forum.
Public record.
In the public records. The most important part is the ultimate of all, all the work we've done are the plans. And these are not preliminary plans. I think this is the seventh version, sixth- I think this is the seventh version, sixth or seventh version of this plan that we've worked on, so.
Thank you. Okay, I am going to move now to staff comments. Is Courtney not able to make it tonight?
Courtney's here.
Oh, just not sitting up here, okay.
She's in the audience.
Ah, okay. So Bruce, will you begin, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Mordred. So in addition to working on the library and other projects, the staff's been very deeply involved in working on both market rate and affordable housing projects. To that end, we have been contacting different development companies that specialize in housing development and introducing the landing and other properties within the city to them in the hopes of generating interest and ultimately generating projects in the housing area. So, and we have been, those that expressed interest in coming here and developing.
Ladies and gentlemen, before you leave, Bruce will be making a comment regarding this whole process. I encourage you to stay. He's not long at what he's doing right now.
Why don't we switch to that first?
I think that's a good idea.
Then people can feel free. Is that better? Okay. Okay, so hopefully you can hear me. So with respect to the library, this city put in place a process. It went through public hearings. The city council adopted the process, and the staff followed the process. The library, community, meaning LTAC, Friends of the Library, and other interested parties have spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, getting us to this point, to where we have a project that we can take forth and put out through a process to hire a firm to complete the final drawings, so that we have a final, fully-designed project with cost estimates, which, one, we could then bid out and get constructed, because we would know what we're building, how much. Also, it could be used for a basis of finding funding. Staff has always said to LTAC that we would do our level best to find grants to help facilitate the construction of the library. To do that, you need finished drawings, basically what they call shovel-ready projects, where you can't, where you get grant consideration. So that's kind of the process we've been going through. We are still in that process, in my opinion. And we're just moving to a new phase. The new phase, we fired the contractor, we're going forward. We're not excluding LTAC, or the Friends of the Library, or the public from the process. In fact, the first order of business that I've directed the contractor to is put together the scope of work, but put it on a timeline, start to finish of what they envision their work to be. And when they submit that to us, we're going to review that and identify points where we think it would be appropriate to have community outreach between the contractor, the city staff, and the public, meaning LTAC, the Friends, the library, and the general public. When we have that, our intent, as it's on the outline that Dennis was referring to, we intend to bring that to LTAC and the Friends and the general public, say, here's what we've put together, here's what we see as the points of contact and the points where meaningful discussion could take place, get feedback in that, make whatever adjustments we have to, then move the project forward. One of the issues that I think has confused all of this, there are a lot of rumors out here. We've heard some of them tonight. One being that we're going to redirect the funds. So first of all, these funds were put in place by the voters. This city council has no legal authority whatsoever to redirect those funds. Those are the library funds. That's it. This council, and I've been here, I have never had a discussion with the council about that library being constructed for anything other than a library. So the discussion that kind of seems to be circulating that it's about to become a city hall, or it's about to become the Boys' and Girls' Club, or other, or a community center, is one. That's not the proper use of funds, not allowed in this council. It has never discussed that with me. So as far as I'm concerned, that issue does not exist. The other issue that seems to be out there is that perhaps we're going to pick this library up somehow and move to someplace other than its present location. There's been no discussion of that, there's no tension. This money is to expand the existing library where it is on that property. And I think that's the proper location for it. So that's where we are, it's where we're going forward. We're hoping to have a great deal of participation. This is the community of the library. It clearly is, and it's an extremely important part of our community. And this is a chance, you know, for the city to say, this is Mount Shasta, and this is our public library, and we're going to build a public library, we're going to do it right. And I think that's a very important commitment this council is making to the community, that they're going to stand behind this library. We're going to have a library we can all be proud of, and that meets the needs of our librarian, so she can function, a librarian for children, and adults can come to the library and utilize the library effectively as a community facility. So that's where we're headed, and I hope everybody stays involved, I really do. So that would be my final comments on the library for this evening.
Courtney, do you want to add anything, Courtney? This outline was failed to mention that the outline that will be presented, that Dennis will be talking about at LTAC, was a collaborative effort between Courtney and Bruce with, I understand, our planner and our public works person as part of the collateral team. But I'd like, I'd like to hear from you, Courtney.
I am happy to be listed as the project co-lead. I do appreciate being totally involved in this process now. I have spent a lot of time, and I feel that the design and the efforts that I've put in really do reflect the community. The best way for the library to be used, Bonnie mentioned tutoring today, was, yeah, actually Saturday, I had to have some tutors in the staff lunchroom, because there was no room. I feel confident, cautiously optimistic, that I will have a good and detailed role. So I'm excited to move forward.
Okay, Bruce has a couple of other things to report on, but then I imagine if you will stay, there'll be at least a few, if not all of us city council people who will also take this opportunity to comment tonight. It's part of our regular agenda, and this is an important topic, so I encourage you to stay. Bruce, do you want to continue with your report?
Certainly.
Thank you, Courtney.
So as part of these ongoing efforts, we have made some contacts with different housing development companies. We've put them together with the potential master developers that we're expecting proposals from regarding the landing, to see if we can't, you know, make it more of a marriage here. These companies are what we call vertical builders. Master developers tend to be land developers. And so this can be a very important part of fleshing out, rounding up proposals. We've also been doing a lot of contact on a website called Opsites, that we've been involved in. And this site gives us direct contact in development companies that are looking for projects. They specify what type of project they're looking for. And we can give immediate, direct response to the company. And so we've been doing that, and out of that, we've attracted a couple of companies, the latest one of which was today, from the Lojia Group from Southern California, that is a major investment development company that was looking for mixed-use projects. I responded to them, and they got back, and they have an interest in the landing. And so we are now involved in a conversation with them, explaining the landing, the opportunity. Hopefully, we can generate a third major development entity that we could get to come before the council, so we can have options. And in housing, the other thing we did, there was private property in the city of Mount Shasta that's been available. It has some difficult issues, like a railroad train.
You know, folks, I'm a little surprised. We're going to wait on Bruce's testimony, but I'm surprised at the number of you who are leaving before you hear the council member's response. I don't get it. I honestly don't get it. I'm surprised. I just, my last request of you, to stay for, to hear the response. It's so incomplete. I mean, you could say that we haven't done a great job of complete communication, and we've acknowledged that. But you would be missing a chance. This is a very brief report, we always do this. So I appreciate those of you who are still here. Okay, I think the terrain has...
What a part of our effort is to see the present landowner is not interested, doesn't feel they're in position to develop the property, so we have offered to represent the property informally, since we are contacting development groups, to explain this property is available, what the price, the asking price is, see if we can generate some interest. And we have gotten some response to that. So that's another avenue we're pursuing. And with respect to Crystal Geyser, a couple of issues. One, I contracted, contacted Crystal Geyser with two points that I wanted to discuss with them. One being, they have a December deadline under which they have to get that sewer and a septic line upgraded per their wastewater discharge permit. And I was concerned, you know, December sounds like a long way out, but you procrastinate a little bit, then you get into problems with federal permits, and all of a sudden it's December, or the weather sets in. So I was conscious, I have to encourage them to get started. They assured me they had CH2M Hill, their engineers, working on it. But it was something that was taking somewhat of a backburner of their interest because of the pending lawsuit. So until that's resolved, that's a main focus. We also had a discussion about the conversation the city had had with Crystal Geyser regarding impacts to the project and off-site improvements, that kind of got lost in the process. They said until the lawsuit is settled, they're not going to enter into any discussions with the city. Once the lawsuit issue is settled, then they are open to discussions. Today, we received notice of an attorney in Davis with intent to file on behalf of Water and the tribe a writ of mandate to have the court instruct the city to terminate your approval of the wastewater permit. I forwarded that to city attorney. City attorney forwarded it to Crystal Geyser's attorney, because you have an indemnification clause, and Crystal Geyser has to defend us on all items.
I'm sorry, I must have tuned out. From whom did we receive this?
This is from an attorney in Davis representing the Water Group. We will advocate.
Oh, Water and the women went to?
Their intent to file for a writ of mandate to have the court instruct the council to overturn this decision and quote-unquote "follow secret."
Okay, thank you.
And they did file that suit today. It's been turned over to city attorney. So additionally, we have an interesting item that came up in our discussions with the landing. One of the individuals, developers, has a very close relationship with Marriott Hotels. In fact, is trying to attract Marriott Hotels to come to the landing. The Marriott Corporation is putting in a program tied through a youth program, where they're doing intensive seminars on hotel management and culinary expertise. And they asked if Mount Shasta had a scout or a student that might be interested in participating in Washington, in DC, in two events. So we're reaching out to the school, to see, and other groups, the scouts, to see if there's anybody who could, you know, participate in the program. So if anybody knows of a young person here that might be a potential candidate, if they could get that to me, I greatly appreciate it.
Do we know what age group of scouts?
No, we do not. We requested that, have not received it. So we also want to inform you that you have a workshop scheduled on the, on May 1st, to be your budgetary workshop. Remember in our last protocols, they said I wanted to have a workshop on the budget, where we discuss the revenue sources, the history of those sources, what the, where those monies fit the budget, what percentage they are of the budget, and to review the capital improvement budget with you. So that is scheduled, May 1st, 3 to 5. And then your next protocols workshop is the next day, on Wednesday, 3 to 5. And there was a question that came up regarding why the cannabis tax report was not on the last agenda. That continued, because we're still waiting a final legal opinion from the city attorney. Once we have that, then we can agenda. Happy to answer your question.
Thank you, any questions, Bruce?
Yeah, one of the citizens mentioned that we may have violated Brown Act. Could you address that procedure? I think we followed it correctly as per the Rosenberg's Rules of Order. The majority, Paul was on the majority. I'm not, I'm asking a question, basically.
Well, our protocols say that when there's been a vote, any member who voted with the majority of the vote has the right to ask the council to reconsider the vote. And that's basically what was requested. Where this gets complicated is that we'd had a long meeting at that point, taken a lot of input, and a decision was made. The mayor called for a short recess. And unfortunately, most of the people that were interested in that subject left. Then there was a request for reconsideration, which is allowed in the protocols, but there was no one to make comment on it remaining.
And there's a time limit for that recall, right? You have to do it either that day of the meeting or by the next meeting, right?
As I read the protocols, the meeting, the council member wishing to make the motion can make it in that meeting or in a subsequent meeting to which that agenda item is continued. And we did not have it continued to a future agenda item, date-specific, so it would be correct to do it in that order. correct to do it in that order.
And, thank you. And I wonder if you could speak to the turning the camera off during recess?
You normally turn it off, don't you? We normally do turn the camera off during recess. We don't leave it running.
The only other time I remember utilizing the recess space, it's allowed here, that's my discretion, is after the longer public comment periods for Crystal Geyser. And this one was a fairly long public comment period, and I thought it would be appropriate to have a break after that. So, the fact that the camera was on is off is, well, I'll address it later, but it was, I understand why those of you who are suspicious and have put a lot of things together would have decided that, oh, this is just another peg in that, in that story, and they turned it off because there was some inappropriate activity done. I'll speak to that later when it's my turn. Other, other questions of staff? Tim?
Bruce, could you indicate what the status of the contract proposal is with Nick Riddle and the Mount Shasta Engineering?
The contract was approved by the council and has been signed by the city manager. You have a binding contract in place. You have a contractor that is working with the subs, putting together the series of events, the flow chart that I requested, and is, they have copies, they've had copies of the building plans that LTAC put together, they had it when they did their proposal. They still have them, they're reviewing those plans already, and so they're prepared, becoming prepared to comment on the questions of the plans, any questions they have about that. They're preparing to do the soil surveys. We have Phil out there that's been added. It's reported there's a lot of peat in the soil, so that has to be identified, so they're moving forward on that.
And Nick has also submitted a request for information, which Courtney, Rod, and myself are in the process of completing. I believe it's a 13-point information request, which includes all previous public outreach, all previous building reports, work done, things like that, all the SEQUA information. So, pretty much almost done with that request today or tomorrow.
The prior library expansion was in 1988, I believe. And I understand that you or Juliana, someone on staff, found the, the cost of...
Correct.
Basically, similar work that, that Mount Shasta Engineering...
Yes, that was a, the city put out a proposal for architectural engineering on the library expansion, 1987 was it? And it went up through an RFP process. They got a series of proposals, they selected, according to the record, the cheapest proposal that was submitted. It was submitted an amount of $130,000 in 1987 dollars. You look at what that would be today, that's probably closer to, you know, adjusted for inflation, about $300,000 proposal.
You would certainly be above 265.
Was that for the plans or the construction?
That was for the A&E for 2,500 square foot addition.
A&E.
Correct.
Yeah, that's basically what you're doing now.
Oh, okay.
And that was publicly built, and the city did that.
And why wasn't it built?
Excuse me?
It wasn't built?
Yes, it was.
They chose...
They chose, they rejected all bids.
Yeah, to correct the city manager, the public record, basically, they received four public bids, and it was 13,000 over what they were willing to spend because they were receiving a state grant from the state library boards for that addition. And so, the city chose to be the primary contractor and just RFP out for subcontractors, and the ended, the end cost ended up still being $133,000 for the A&E by having a, basically, they had a city employee serve as, as the project lead and general contractor, and it ended up being just as expensive as the lowest bid.
And A&E is the drawings, architecture?
What, yeah, basically, they didn't, they did not do any...
A&E is architecture and engineering, yeah.
They did not do any landscaping or things like that, but it was for the construction pieces of that to be improved. So all of that information has been shared with Nick as far as what work was done there. They did do a change order part of the way through that project as well, and so we provided him with all that detailed information. And my understanding as well is that Nick and one of his in-house engineers did go and visit with Courtney for a couple of hours on Friday, and they did an exterior investigation of the building and took a look at the footings and things like that already.
And it's my understanding that the conceptual design and all the paperwork that went with it, that the, that the city council approved way back when, went out as part of the bid process, so that every, every company that bid on it had the same drawings and information from which to submit their bids. Is that right?
Those drawings were available.
They were presented to the city council at the decision of the RFP process, and when the RFP was confirmed, those, the plans that were submitted to the city were included with the RFP.
Yeah. Okay, other questions of staff? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, Nancy Van Susteren, a member of the public, made a comment that city council failed to follow Rosenberg's rules. So, if that be the case, would there be any purpose in adding to the next agenda item question whether to change or reaffirm the vote? Or is it too late to do that?
I thought, I'm sorry, can I say something at this point? I thought he just said that we follow the process. I thought that we followed the legal process.
I heard city manager say that we followed the city protocols.
We had a request from a member of the voting majority to reconsider the vote. That was consistent with the protocols. We now have an executed contract with the contractor that is expending money, and if you're asking, can you go back and reconsider that vote, which would be reconsidered, I would imagine to go in some different direction, then I think you need to discuss that with the city attorney because your exposure is getting very high.
Okay, at the, at the very least, we might want to add to the next city council agenda a reaffirmance of that vote, a repeat of the vote in accordance with Rosenberg's rules. You can discuss that perhaps with city attorney.
Certainly.
Moving to the housing issues that you described, I know the city council has not had, has not received any information regarding potential master developers, nor has the city council made a decision to use a master developer on the landing. So if you are talking to potential master developers, I think it would be good for staff to bring information forward, and I think that would require a city vote as to whether we're going to use a master developer or not on the landing.
So are we still in staff questions, or have you moved on to your comments?
I thought we were at staff comments.
No. Yeah, questions of staff.
All right, well, let me ask another question. You mentioned Opsites. I think at the present time, we are currently on a 30-day freebie trial basis for Opsite. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is it your intent to bring to council a request for appropriation so that we can use Opsites on a more than 30-day temporary basis?
Yes, it is.
And will that be at the next agenda meeting, at the next council meeting?
We're working on that. We have requested, just received information from Opsites on the services and the background information, so we can present that in the staff report to better inform the council of what you might be contracting for, and so our goal is to have that on the next agenda.
Okay. And in terms of promoting city property or other property, private property that may be available for housing development, have you discussed with folks from Opsites or others the orchard property and the potential for developing on that site?
I include that as part of, that originally was part of the landing in my mind. And so, when I talk about the landing, I talk about the orchard, I talk about both the west and east sides of Mount Shasta Boulevard, and then we talk about properties like the mosque property, we talk about other properties that are available, but I make a distinction between city-owned properties and privately-owned properties.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Any other critical questions we have before we go to council comments?
I have some brief comments before you go to council comments, please.
Okay.
If you keep asking your questions.
Just a quick question on what, what's the status of ClimatTech? It was on the agenda, future agenda item that was taken off. It's not ready yet, ClimatTech report?
No, it wasn't ready in time, so we pulled it, I pulled it in my direction.
Okay.
And we are bringing that back hopefully for your next council meeting also.
For information, I reminded Bruce today that I'd like to have a memo go out that explains when something's dropped from a draft agenda, why it was dropped. Okay.
Question, Bruce. So, these master developers, they, they'll, can you just explain the process from my own edification? What do you hope that they'll present to you and therefore the city council?
What I've talked to the, the two major development groups that are, are stating that they're going to make proposals is that they would, they would put their proposal together, bring the private sector interpretation of what the economists want, what they see as a viable uses. They have the adopted specific plan, the council adopted for that, they have the environmental documents. I have asked them, this is what the city is seeing, this is, but don't see that, feel that you're absolutely bound by that document. Give us the free market investment perspective. That doesn't mean we have to follow any of it. And I've said, I want this to be as complete a proposal as possible, so the council knows what it's getting. Now, in land development, you have people that specialize in land development. They get the infrastructure in, you have the circulation, the water, the sewer, the power, they grade sites, and then they sell sites off to vertical builders. Some use a housing builder, like the USA Property, that's one of the housing groups. They build, they own, they operate the housing. They do affordable and they do market rate housing. So that, that's kind of a distinction between the two type of groups you have, vertical developers and land developers. You need both of them to have successful projects. In some cases, you'll get master developers that will do certain portions of the vertical also. So that's incumbent upon them to lay out who they are, what they do, what their proposal is for the properties.
Okay, thank you. In order to respect the folks' time out in the audience, I'd really like to ask if there are any other questions of staff, that we take that up outside the meeting and get on to the comments that council members may have regarding the library issue.
I just have one question for Catherine Wilson. Do we have any volunteer opportunities? We have any vacancies on any of city committees?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Almost all of our Brown Act committees have vacancies. Currently, the Active Transportation Committee has several vacancies. The Beautification Committee has two vacancies. We have received one application. I did attempt to set a special meeting for tonight, but I was unable to get ahold of the applicant, so we'll hope for a special meeting in two weeks. The Community Economic Development Advisory Committee has one vacancy for a representative of a local financial services business, and the Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee has two vacancies.
So rather than have Tim ask this each time, could you just plan to do that every time, Kathy? I appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay, now we move on to council comments. Who would like to begin?
I want to thank the people who stayed. I appreciate that. I appreciate the comments. I understand the concern and the upset. I can assure you, there's no conspiracies going on. When I changed my vote, I changed it because I didn't really have the courage to vote the way I wanted to to begin with because I knew too many people in the audience, and I didn't feel I had enough time to explain it. So that's why I did it. I had to be true to myself. I think that LTAC, I think the committees have done a remarkable job over the years. I commend you. I have done many things to support the library over the years, and I'm 100% for the project, 100%. Not one person came up to me and asked me, why did you change your vote? So, I was hoping the other people could be stay and listen to that. So, I'll probably go to the meeting and explain it to the people who didn't want to wait. So anyway, I'm 100% for it. I just thought this was the best process to go, to get it going. We need, because of SEQUA, because of state requirements now, we have to have everything verified. Everything has to be stamped, everything has to be approved, and we, that wasn't done yet. You know, the plan was just ready to sit there, to be engineered, have an engineer look at it and approve it, and do all the statistics that they have to do. The state of California now requires so much for public buildings that it drives the cost up. I, you know, I deal with this kind of stuff. I felt it was time just to move it on, let's get the library built. We have Courtney on, I think that's wonderful, she's done a remarkable job. I think that Dennis and Chris and everybody has done a good job. I voted that way because that's what I felt the best thing to do was. No other reason. I felt it was good time to give it to the engineer, quit messing around, and let's get the library built. And that's why I did that. It was nothing personal, there was no conspiracies, you know? I'm, I've always been a supporter of the library, and I can, will continue to do that. So I just felt this was the way I wanted to vote, and I wish I had done it when everybody was here. Lack of courage, whatever it was, you can, you can say whatever you want, but, you know, I apologize for that. I created a lot of controversy, and, and I'll, you know, I'm a, I'll, I'll take the blame for that, okay? It was, it was on me for not saying that to begin with, so I apologize for that. So I said, let's get on and build the library.
Thank you, Paul. John, have you anything to add? The other ad hoc member?
Yep, as, as people may, may have seen or heard, I was in favor of option three, and which was the rebidding of, of an altered RFP to hopefully bring in a lower engineering package for this project. Then I, then I changed, based on some of the things that Dennis said, to option four, which was to basically continue this in the hopes of the stakeholders getting together and coming up with a, with an idea to move forward. And, yeah, so that changed, but I was hopeful that there was a way to, to lower the costs of the planning stage of this project, and I did not know that with respect to constant dollars, a previous plan actually was a similar, similar cost. So, I, I'm of the opinion that it's, it's not really possible to turn back time here and... not really possible to turn back time here and rebid this or start again. And I'm not really sure about revoting, but on the issue that happened the other two weeks ago. But I'm hopeful that the stakeholders, mainly LTAC and Friends of the Library, along with Mount Shasta Engineering, will, will work hard to, to certainly keep the planning costs within the estimated 100 and, well, the contract, $199,000. And maybe there'll be some savings beyond that, but we'll see. My bigger concern was what Bruce addressed, which was the diversion or use of funds for purposes other than library improvements. And that has been a concern of mine going back to the summer of 2016, actually. And and it was more than hearsay and it was more than anecdotal comments. These are direct comments by people in the community and elsewhere. I won't develop that right now, but the city managers assured you and us here at the city council that the funds will be used strictly for library purposes as intended and voter-approved. So with that, I will rest easy going forward. And I'm sure that if something happens that strays from that comment of Bruce, that you and, and others will, will stand up and try to make sure that things are put on the right course with respect to using the funds for library purposes only. So I think that was a major, major comment by, by the city manager a few minutes ago regarding use of funds for library purposes only. And I hope you took it that way, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, have you have any comments?
No, I don't think I have any, any addition to what Tori even said.
Thank you. Barbara?
Yes, I have a science background, and so what I'm looking for is data. So when I heard about the library expansion, I was looking for, what evidence do you have to show that the expansion needs to take place? I was, so I'm very interested in seeing the numbers and that I haven't, I haven't seen. I'm also really curious about how the architectural design decisions were made. And I didn't really see any explanation as to what the criteria was for the building expansion. So I'm, I'm, I feel like I have a lack of information on the current suggestion going forward. I feel like I have not really participated or seen announcements for public meetings except for the one open house that showed already an existing design. And I, I saw it as a sketch. It's a sketch. It's, it's, it's a proposal and a beginning of a, of a process. What I'm interested in, now that it's been 30 years and 50 years since we both, since we built the library, is using the new technology that's available to really design a 3D sketch of this building so we can do virtual tours of the interior and also look at the building from the exterior. So really know what this building is going to look like. And make sure all the community members know. So by the time it gets built, we all know what's going to come down the road. That is available for us today. And that is a process that I can get behind.
Thank you. Well, I have a smattering of notes here. I hope I can speak to each of them in a non-confusing way. First off, I'm hugely supportive of the expansion of the library. I think we all are. And I thought we were advancing that by, from previous decisions. And that is the library expansion on the current site. There's no question to go, to speak to Linda's points about it being ideal from a number of perspectives. Many of us are supporters of both the Boys and Girls Club and the Land Trust, et cetera, et cetera. So it's an excellent site. Now, I know there have been additional rumors flying around. We're going to put it at the landing. No, we're going to put it downtown, et cetera, et cetera. There has been no discussion of that. And there just isn't. This has been a highly-charged environment in the nation, in the world, and in this community about many things. A rumor takes hold and flies. And I understand that. Those rumors have no foundation. I, I did speak to the person that I had heard was told, you told me? Was, was saying something in public? And anyway, I tried to close that loop. There is no consideration of that. The camera, we turned the cameras off during break. We did, there's, there's never been a reason to have them on. So though I can understand, as I said before, how you put two and two together and that was just another evidence that we were doing something improper. I didn't even know the cameras were off. And I've, I've heard people speculate about us gathered up here, grouping, talking about it. I went to the bathroom. I came back and I was told, Paul wants to reconsider. I said, can we do that? And then I was informed by Bruce, and maybe Tim weighed in because he, he knows the protocol, that this is the protocol. And so I agreed to do it. We opened it up, we voted, we, there were no public comments because there was no one left. And that was really, I just, it didn't occur to me. I thought we had to do it during the same meeting and, and proceed with it. And it, it, I was, in my mind, there was no violation. There certainly wasn't any intent. And there was no violation of, of the process. It's unfortunate because I, you know, everybody left. And you think, oh, my God, you did this because we'd already left. That's not the case. That's not the case. As far as having had no information when we made that decision, it's true that those, that information was not in the packet. And there, and I was not happy about it. That was a very bad oversight on our part. However, we did get a report, mostly from John, point by point by point by point about what the ad hoc committee had discussed with the others. And I personally have met with folks during the months here that we've been talking about this. I've met with Dennis a couple of times. I've met with folks. I've, I've, I've had a frequent communication with Courtney so that we could be on the same page, I understood. So it's not as if, I'll just speak for myself. It's not as if I knew nothing about this process and where we were at, where we were going, what the issues were. I thought, I, I would have appreciated a more full report back from the ad hoc. And we've since talked about that. But, you know, what an ad hoc is, an ad, we set up ad hocks sometimes when we think it's a better course to have one or two council people focus on an issue and then report to the rest of us their recommendation. We don't always go with that recommendation, but they did their job, they reported to us. There was nothing that I heard in that that told me that if we give an extension to this process, it's going to end up much different. Except if we have to rebid this process because of the changes we make, we're going to be several months down the line, which could mean that the cost of construction will go up even higher and make up for whatever savings we would have made. So I voted in, in favor of moving this process ahead, given that they had, that the contractors had been given the the design work that, that had been done before. Part of the issue here is role clarification. We have mistakenly not acted as a strong board of trustees. The council has not. If at all, quite frankly. I, I don't have a long history with the council, but my understanding is that we didn't see how clearly our role as a board of trustees for the library was. In the meantime, it is LTAC and the Friends and the supporters of the library who've kept the library going. We've been very grateful. And then hiring Courtney has been a huge benefit. So LTAC took it upon themselves to do more than what their technical responsibility is. So much of this issue revolves around the fact that we've got some role clarification we have to do here for us to assume our responsibility and for LTAC to understand theirs better. We need to talk about that better. That role clarification issues and decision-making authority are the primary means by which groups go awry. And we have gone awry there. And I feel as responsible about that as anyone. The, the good news is that this issue has brought forward the degree to which this community loves this library. We knew that, we knew that. But hopefully, we, we can be, we can go in, go to a spot where we all agree to what we agree to and spend less time on, on the areas we have some disagreement about. Because, because the council cannot delegate that authority, make the decision about how we spend the money. The library folks cannot do that. That's our decision based on the recommendation. So it's an important recommendation and an important, all the data that you have accrued is important to us. I, I am a bit disappointed that we didn't include the, a discussion of the project outline tonight. It will be apparently discussed at LTAC. But there's been a lot of work since the last council meeting put into defining the way forward here, which is as inclusive. It's, it's a very inclusive process. It was put together by, by Courtney, who's representing the interests of the, the rest of you and hopefully has been in communication with Bruce, our city manager. And for instance, one of the steps is after they've, after they've met, then they will, after the project leads have met with Mount Shasta Engineering and the community with, including Friends and LTAC, they will put together flow charts and will bring it and summarize all of the concerns, questions, feedback, bring it back in form of a memo and then see if any revisions will be needed to the project budget and timeline based on the initial meetings. We've done the best we can, given that we have issued a contract, to make sure we have not ignored any information that has been provided to us. This outline, I hope that you do pay careful attention to it. I think it could have been provided, gone into a little bit more detail with Courtney and Bruce tonight. They chose not to do that. But I, I, it's, it's a very inclusive process from here on out. Lastly, I'd just like to thank you all for your patience, for your giving the benefit of the doubt. There have been no ethical violations here. There have been mistakes in communication. There have been oversights. That happens. I ask for your forgiveness. And we're making the best of it from here on out. Everybody makes mistakes. And certainly, if you're put in a position where you're making decisions all the time, it's easy to make one. And it's easy to be, do so in a public arena. So I appreciate your patience and and we'll move forward from here. Stay engaged. There's plenty of opportunity, starting Thursday night. And then you'll see specific meetings that have been planned into the outline from here. So thank you for your patience and for listening to us. Appreciate it. And now, now we need to move on. Bruce, can I ask you a question? You're probably looking for funding for a building on a, for, for housing. Have you contacted the Northern California Community Loan Fund? Okay, thank you. It's time to move on now to agenda item number seven. The consent agenda. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added hereto shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes, April 9th, 2018, regular city council meeting. B, approval of disbursements, accounts payable 314, 329, 330, 43 and 412, 18, total gross payroll and taxes for the periods ending 325 and 48, 18. C, monthly financial and investment report. And D, adopting the 2018-19 list of projects for submittal to the California Transportation Commission to be eligible for SB 1 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Funds, Resolution CCR 18 dash 22. Can somebody offer a motion?
A move that city council approved consent agenda items A through D as just read.
And a second, please? Seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous approval. We move on now to item number eight. The first reading of ordinance number CCR 18 dash 23, amendments to special events ordinance.
It should be a CCO 18 dash. Oh, until, I always forget that. Anyway.
What, what, what just happened?
Nothing. There you go, yep. So this is the first reading of the special events proposed amendments from the Planning Department and Planning Commission. This was in response to the charge given to the Planning Commission in 2017 by city council. The feedback we directly responded to was the need for a better definition for special events. Especially, you know, the definition that was before was too broad. In this process, the city staff also took it as an ability to amend certain portions of the ordinance that we've had issues with as far as consistency, reporting to the applicant, reasons for denial, things like that. It's really important to note that when we put this together with Planning Commission and when we put this together with city staff, we at no time want to deny a special event. We are very open to all of the special events. If I'm not loud enough, I can speak up. Okay. So we're not in the habit of denying special events, but we do get certain circumstances where either people file two weeks ahead of time, people put on events without proper permitting. And those are the situations we want to avoid because our goal first and foremost is keeping the city safe. And that's the big thing with our special events is there's a lot of change that happens with special events. We also want to make sure that's not a nuisance to the adjacent property owners. For example, if you're putting on a noisy party, you know, that does affect your neighbors. And we want to keep that in, in perspective with this ordinance. So we're not in the wheelhouse of denying people. We're just trying to make sure that it is a safe event that is cohesive with the neighborhood and neighboring parcels. So we use the City of Carlsbad special events example. It was pretty straightforward. It met a lot of the needs that we had, especially in terms of definitions. And then the police, public works, fire, and city manager departments reviewed the proposed changes and had some amendments that are listed on page 41 of your packet, pretty much just ensuring language, ensuring good road closure practices. We discussed the prohibition of animals at special events and determined that it is actually not a codified ordinance. It's part of a health and safety ordinance where it only takes a letter from the city manager to remove that rule. And it is the opinion of the city staff, as well as the recommendation from Planning Commission, to remove that. We have some issues with it because it's a difficult-to-enforce regulation. And we feel that if we're going to do that, we need to enforce that a lot better. The city staff's from the opinion that the city security or the, sorry, not the city security, but the event security and the event managers should anticipate that animals will attend and should anticipate rules and regulations and how they're going to deal with it. We've had a lot of really bad experiences working with special events that, you know, just pretty much turn a blind eye and say, well, the city's going to deal with it, when in reality, we're not there to police their event. We're there to be there for emergencies. So that being said, if somewhere were to get bitten by an animal, we will respond to that because that is a criminal offense. That is a health and safety issue. We will respond for those things. But the city police department and the city fire department have been used as security in the past, and that's not the function of those departments. We're there to ensure that everybody is safe. The final change is the addition of some school events to the list of exempt events. Schools are currently exempt in our special event ordinance. Schools are currently exempt in our special event ordinance, city staff recommend keeping that exemption. The one thing we did talk about is, we are going to work with the schools to do some type of exercise with them to go over the special events permit for parades. It's something they haven't done in the past, but we would like to start doing with them. Planning Commission had a special concern not to charge school facilities for those permits, but they did agree that any type of parade should go through the same type of thought process and review by the department heads. So, moving on, just some of the questions I received from council members prior to this meeting. One of the things Planning Commission did add as well to exemptions is activities with less than 100 people utilizing park district facilities with the approval of the park district and are not open to the general public. Examples of this type of event are retirement parties, birthdays, and weddings. That was recommended by one of our planning commissioners, because he felt that it was a little too strenuous for events that are not open to the public to apply for those special event permits. We are in the case right now where there is going to be a wedding hosted in the city limits, and there are going to be some traffic concerns, so we tried to provide exemptions and considerations for those type of events that are not open to the public. So I'm just going to open it up for direct questions now. Didn't really receive too many comments about this. We really didn't receive any, oh, I'm sorry. There was an email about the Earth Day thing, the Earth Day event that happened previously, having some questions. One of the things to cover really quick, anytime we set a permit fee, we are not making revenue off of that. So the city does not make any money off of permits. We charge for the hours it takes to review a permit. So, one of the things right now is that our permits are $50 and $150, that's based off of the time it takes to the review those. At the second reading of this ordinance, I'll propose the new resolutions for the new fees that would be associated with those, and the way those are, like I said, calculated is that it's just the time it takes for the city staff to review those and administer those. So we do not make revenue off any of the permits we do, including anything outside of special events, so signs, everything like that. We do anticipate doing special event training, we've discussed it with the Chamber of Commerce before, because they do a very good job on all of their events. Dotson does a very good job on their events. So we anticipate hosting an event training. One of the things that's changing as well is, the Health Department is changing how they deal with special events, so we're hoping to coordinate with them as well to do training for people who are interested in having food vendors. We do anticipate a major and minor application fees, so smaller events are not held to all of the scrutiny, but they will have to have insurance, they will have to have certain things that are required of all events. And then, one of the other things that was brought up was, do all the department heads need to review permits? Yes, they do. It is incredibly essential that we are at these meetings when we review the applications, because each of the department heads is looking for something specific. For example, Rod is always looking for traffic flow, Rod is also looking for street closures, because if we're going to shut down Mount Shasta Boulevard, that's a main shipping route for trucks, and so we have to make sure that those things are going well. We don't want any traffic issues. Same thing for police and fire, they're looking for their subsequent department areas. Bless you. And then, as for myself, it's really important for planning to be there, because we typically keep all of the permits. I have not been involved with this season's permits, just due to the workload in my office, they've been offset to the city manager, but after the changes, I do anticipate taking back over that duty. So the Planning Department looks for noise issues, adjacent uses, things like that. And then, as far as the vendor applications, the third-party vendor application is how we collect sales tax, and it's similar to the business license. I believe the question was asked, if they have a business license, can they also be a vendor at these events? That is correct, if they hold a business license with the city. The biggest thing with us is, we have to register them for that collection of sales tax. So they do need to pay that. Right now, the first day is $16, every subsequent, or every consecutive day after is $15 per vendor. We do ask that they do that two weeks prior to the event taking place. Because certain vendors come on later in the session, they don't have a list of all their vendors always upfront, so we don't require that. We do ask if they have food vendors, though. So, the vendors are allowed to come in up until two weeks out. The reason we do that is because it really bogs down our finance department when they come in a day before, and they really don't appreciate that, and it's very difficult for them to issue the proper type of paperwork in time. So that's just why we do those things. That's set by the finance department. Sorry. So those were the only ones I've gotten, as far as questions from the general public. Everyone else has been pretty much, it really doesn't affect the big events that we have now, it really doesn't affect any of those. They all do everything well ahead of time, they all abide by all the rules that we have in there. The biggest thing is, the required application pieces that we put there are things that are already reported on. So, I'll open it up for questions.
Questions first, and then public comment. So, my experience at Earth Day is that we had a fair number of people coming in from out of town, so can they apply for these permits online? Is it easy for out-of-town people to get that done? Or do they have to be in town?
I don't know if it's online or not, that would be a question for the finance department, and that could be something we can easily do a PDF fillable form for. I know they do have to have some articles of incorporation, and I think there's another piece of paper that they have to have with that, but I can check with finance to make sure that that's on. We have a special event tab on the Planning Department webpage, so we can easily put that fillable form on there, if we can do that.
And they could submit photocopies of the documents that you need?
I, like I said, I don't work in the.
I mean, photos, I mean.
Scan.
Scan.
I don't know. That was a question for our finance department.
So I'm saying, logistically, it's hard for people who don't live in town to get those permits submitted, two weeks in advance, if they're.
Well, they can mail them in. So they can fill, they can fill them out and mail them into the city.
Okay.
I have a question about dogs. I love dogs, don't get me wrong. Where's our liability if a dog bites somebody?
So, all of our events are supposed to have general liability insurance, that also has the city additionally insured.
Okay, so the person putting the event is going to buy the insurance.
Correct. Every event is currently required to get that insurance, and it's a standard practice in every city.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
In terms of Parker Plaza, how is that treated in this special events draft ordinance?
So Parker Plaza, we do require people to get a special event permit when they're using that already, because of how broad our definition of a special event permit is. We really haven't had too many people who want to do that, and I just remember one, Barbara's questions that I'll cover in a sec. So how we determine, the new definition is if it's over 50 people, and the way that you determine that number is, you take your smallest open public space that you can have a meeting or gathering in, and that's how you determine the minimum number. So Parker Plaza is actually our smallest city, you know, venue, and we actually went out and figured out that it's about 46 to 50 people safely, while still providing ADA access on the sidewalk, and so that's how we came up with the 50 people or more. So if someone, for example, wants to have their book club meet out there, and there's 12 of them, not a special event. But if you do start getting to the 50-plus area, then you're starting to block safe access, you're starting to possibly bleed into the city streets. The other thing we added in here that Barbara had asked about was amplified noise. When you start putting amplified noise there, that's going to maybe disrupt some of the neighboring uses. If you do not have amplification, it is not covered. So, there was a person playing bagpipes last week, walking around the city, that's not under the special event ordinance. You can do that anytime you want, if that's what you would like to do with your life. So, if people are playing, you know, music, that's pretty much just acoustics, they can do that. Once you start amplifying things, once you start getting a large group of people that could possibly make it unsafe for wheelchair access or, you know, traffic, that's when we start to step in.
I'm still not clear, because DIAC is hoping to encourage music events, perhaps other events at Parker Plaza, likely to be amplified.
Okay.
So.
So what we could do with that is similar to the farmer's market, where since DIAC is a city committee, they don't have to pay the fee. But I would advise them to at least fill out the form, so that they can think about all the different sections, like security, safety, where are people going to use the bathrooms, things like that. What we have in here is called a serial event, and so what they would do is just file a serial event, and so they'd say, "We're going to have music on these days, it's going to be amplified," and follow those. I would advise them to follow those protocols, but they would be exempt from the fee.
Is the staff's intent to have different forms for small event versus a multi-hundred or thousand people event?
Yes. So there's a minor event, and then there's a major event. Major events tend to have more people, tend to shut down streets, and have larger traffic and safety considerations, and minor events do not.
Well, I read that, and then I also read all the information that's required on the application.
Mm-hmm.
And what I'm asking is, is the application for minor event going to be requesting less information?
Yes. So, we do still need certain things, like I said, the minute they start, you know, it's always going to depend on each event, because certain events have food, certain events have amplified noise, and then others don't. And so there are certain sections that don't apply to some events. So, let's see. I'm trying to think of, for example, but I haven't looked at a special event app in like six months. There are certain events that we have right now, like Dotson, for example. They don't fill out a security, or they don't fill out a noise section, they don't fill out a food vendor. They don't have to, because they don't have any of those things. So we are going to tweak the application a little bit, where that if there is a section that doesn't apply, they can mark that. Worst-case scenario, they submit it, and we say, "You know, we do have some concerns about this section you didn't fill out, could you please give us more information?" Which we've done that in the past, and they won't be discounted for that.
Okay. At 7.30.040, currently called exceptions.
Okay.
The sentence says, "When conducted entirely on private property, the following are not considered special events." I suggest that that sentence be modified to read, "When conducting, conducted entirely on public or private property, the following are not considered special events."
What page are you on, Tim?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, thank you.
Okay, I can see that, yeah, and it doesn't change the intent of what they were trying to do.
Right. "Dances and other events conducted by schools, churches, lodges on school, church, or lodge property" was deleted.
Correct.
I'm not sure why, and maybe you can clarify that.
Correct. So we did add, in the exception number five, "Activities conducted by a government or school agency acting within the scope of its authority." So school dances would be catalogued under that. The other thing is, we were talking about lodge, you know, if that's in reference to like the Masons or the Elks, you know, they are an organization that should still fill out a special event permit, and the Masons do for their car show. The other one, too, is religious-based. You are seeing a lot more religious-based events, in especially this area, with either the I Amers, or the Buddhist monks, or things like that. We would want to consider safety in those types of functions, if they, you know, fall under this type of thing.
Let's move to 7.30.060, application for permit. And I understand that we used Carlsbad as a template for this proposed ordinance. Carlsbad is more than 10 times as large as Mount Shasta, maybe more than 20 times. I am concerned about subsection B that says, "Application shall be filed at least 45 days in advance of the application," or "in advance of the event."
Forty, yep. Sorry, go ahead.
Forty-five days seems like a very long time in a city as small as Mount Shasta, where the reviewing persons basically consist of about four people.
Correct. Actually, that was our amendment, we elongated that.
I noticed that.
Yes. So the 45 days is in reference to new standards that the Siskiyou County Health Department is putting out. So Siskiyou County Health Department is amending their ordinance to state that no more than, or no less than 30 days, you must register all of your food vendors. In anticipation of that, we added the 15 days to allow people to put those in, and if they have a food vendor, or have multiple food vendors, and they didn't go to the public health office yet, we want to give them at least a few weeks to go and do that. Now, again, one of the things I want to bring up is, we are going to be doing a better job of doing some trainings for how to fill out these things, or how to plan an event. Like I said, I was hoping the chamber would maybe help with one or two of those, because they do a good job. But most, if not all, of our events make that 45 days. Easy.
I would, just speaking for myself, I know this is beyond questioning, I would like to keep it at the 30-day time period, but I'll bring that up later on.
FYI, they're about 120,000, Carlsbad, approximately.
What? I can't hear you.
120,000.
For Carlsbad.
Population for Carls.
So, the reason why we picked this one, it was very straightforward, it used the same department heads we do, and it didn't add a lot of work to our current workload, so.
On 7.30.080, and that looks like it's agenda pages 48 and 49. This would be on 48. Subparagraph B, "The permitting may post a maximum of eight graphics that promote the event at locations approved by the city manager." And I think the intent there is talking about eight signs in public, public locations. There are any number of events that have flyers in store windows, or office windows, or restaurant windows, or where, or on bulletin boards. This could be read to prohibit that sort of thing, and obviously, we don't want to prohibit, we want to encourage successful events. So, how would staff suggest that we change the language of paragraph B, if at all, to be consistent with being able to promote the event effectively, without violating this proposed section?
Sorry, I'm just looking something up. Does anyone else have any other questions while I look it up?
I just have a comment after public comment.
I mean, you can reword it however you want. I mean, you can just, I mean, you could just say, "There's a flaw with the whole flyer thing," and send it back to Planning Commission.
Well, is there, is there any reason not to simply strike the, the maximum eight signs limitation? To strike that from the proposed ordinance?
I would not recommend that, just because you do have some events like Shasta Taiko that used to post a lot larger signs, and that's the intent here with those types of promotional signs, is those were the type of signs we were thinking about, is that if people want larger, you know, freestanding signs that are temporary at Berryvale or places like that, in anticipation, that was the intent of that.
So that does not include interior windows? Because we don't regulate.
Yeah, we can't, yeah.
There's no exclusion for that.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't cover what's inside buildings, that's not part of.
That's technically true.
If we were to change this, would we need to send this back through Planning Commission?
I'm just trying to think about how to word it, so.
Right. Would we have to? Does this constitute a minor?
I would definitely recommend another first reading.
Another first reading?
Yep. So, if you want, what I can do is take the intent that you've communicated and add a provision to protect the ability of businesses to post flyers, or like 11-by-17 posters, and then bring it back for the first reading next meeting.
Yeah, and there are a number of private bulletin boards. Yeah, and there are a number of private bulletin boards. Raves has a private bulletin board. There's a private bulletin board outside of Directions.
Nope, we'll just, I'll just add language to add flyers can go up. I, like I said, the intent of the maximum eight graphics was for larger types of advertisement.
So like in landscaping, sort of posting?
Yeah.
Okay, so independent of bulletin boards and all?
Correct.
All right, let's move to 7.30.110. And that is on Page 50 and 51 of the agenda packet. I think, I think the intent of 15 and 17, numbers 15 and 17 that are listed?
Okay, you're on 100, not 110.
Or 120.
100.
100, I guess it is, yes, thank you, 100. Well, things that we changed from my draft to what I'm seeing here, but there it is. I think it's 090, actually.
Where are you at, Tim?
It looks like it's, it looks like it's been renumbered to 090.
What's the title?
Reasons for denial of a special event permit.
100, and some of the numbers are off. We'll just, I'll fix those.
Okay.
So, but Reasons for Denial is 7.30.100, beginning on Page 49 and going to Page 50.
And I'm concerned about number 15 and number 17 as being overly broad. Number 15, the special, the application can be denied if the special event will interfere with the normal access and function of business and/or residences during any period in a manner which will have adverse impact on the reasonable use or access to those areas.
What if I would happen then?
If, if we found that it was extraneous, so one of the things we do require now is we require them to notify for a first-time event, for a major event, and first time using a city facility. And so that gives, one of the things that hasn't happened in the past is we haven't been giving business owners, and this was a concern of the Planning Commission. One of the things they were concerned with is they, in the past, we have not given business owners who are impacted by special events enough, say. And one of our planning commissioners actually went around and asked a lot of the business owners about shutting down Mount Shasta Boulevard and Castle Street parking lot particularly. And he found that most of them are fine with one or two major events every year, but they really do have an issue with multiple events happening downtown. And this denial reason gives them at least, it gives us as a city to give them a little bit more clout as far as, you know, making sure we're not, you know, we keep trying to promote the downtown area for special events, but that doesn't benefit every single business downtown. And so we want to make sure we balance those. And we, you know, first and foremost, before we deny, we would work with the applicant to work with those complaints if we do have a business being highly adversely impacted.
From a strictly legal standpoint, 15, as it reads right now, would be grounds for a business to shut down all sorts of events. I would suggest adding word "unduly" in front of adverse impact or adding a phrase like "unacceptable" or "unreasonable" in front of adverse impact, so it's not just any adverse impact.
How about excessive? Is that okay? Because we use excessive in a few other pieces.
That might work also. And then under 17 as well, "The conduct of a special event will substantially interrupt the safe and orderly movement of other pedestrians, vehicle traffic." Again, almost any event will do that, so I think you're talking about will substantially and negatively interrupt.
Or something like, if I may, if it's, if it's anticipated that it's unmitigable, we can't mitigate it for some reason with our.
Yeah, unduly, because again, we, we're trying to find that balance. Let's see. That may be it. I'm going to check my notes while somebody else is asking questions of you, Juliana.
Well, I can go ahead and ask mine. It's really, it's a combination of a question and a comment. I had asked you to reconcile something, Juliana, which I'm just not clear about. It has to do with a notice of denial and the appeals. And I may have the numbers wrong, but notice of, yeah, a notice of denial is 110. It says that we will have not less than 21 days prior to the event. We need to deny it if we're going to, not less than 21 days prior to the event. You know, for major events, three weeks isn't enough time. They take months and months, as you know, as you well know, to, to put together. So I wondered if it wouldn't make more sense to speak in terms of how much time after an application is received do we have to deny a permit?
So if it's not supposed to be in 45 days, three, four weeks for us to meet with them, discuss this, make amendments. Most special events have amendments. The only two we really don't ever amend is 4th of July and the run because they do it every year. But other events do have consistent meetings. They do have a lot of work by the department heads to make things flow smoothly. So you're asking us to do a lot of work in, 45 is two weeks before, that's not very long.
Well, just let her, let her finish, you guys.
So, so the biggest thing is, you know, the shorter the time you put in between those two dates, kind of the worse your, your event's going to be.
Well, that's a good point and I, so I, let me continue this because the other thing it's sandwiched by is the appeals section, which is 120 or I don't know where it is now.
It's at the end.
Which talks about how they must appeal within 10 days and then it's posted, it's put on an agenda, the first available agenda, which is two weeks, could be two weeks later. So that's 25 days. That could be 24 days.
And you're assuming that we're waiting to the last minute to send that denial, though. Ideally, we should meet ahead of time, meet with them to say the grievances and give them a duly amount of time.
Okay, well, I get it. I'm not sure what the answer is, but the point I'm trying to make is that by the time we may have weighed in on it, on an appeal, the event would have already been passed.
And maybe that person needs to put in that event earlier next year. I mean, I've had to deny events for people who are like, "I want to do this for 300 people in two weeks," but I technically don't have anything in the current ordinance that says I have any right to deny them. I've just told them, you have, like, we can't make that work in two weeks. So theoretically, they could have come back and say, "Well, you theoretically cannot deny us that."
Well, that's a different point.
So we're trying, we're trying to deal with situations for denial.
Yeah.
If you want to change the days, just change the days. I don't care anymore.
No, I care.
So.
I'm, I'm, wait, Juliana.
I mean, it's, it's, at the end of the day, just pick a number.
No, I'm not going to do that. I'm, I'm looking for some feedback about what makes, what's the best compromise here and maybe this is it. You've got the, 45 days.
It's a minimum.
At least 45 days.
But an application.
So they could, i- if we increase that, it would, might be a hardship on them if we said it's got to be two months. If we made it two months, then it would give us a little more wiggle room in here to, for staff to evaluate it. It's just that the numbers didn't work for me.
A reasonable remedy, if I may, is to base it upon the time from which the application is submitted, not from the time that the event is to occur.
Right.
So, for example, if an event planner is putting in an application a year in advance with the idea that six to nine months in advance, they're going to be signing contracts with.
Right.
Participants for that event, then you want everything to be from the time of the application.
Which is what I suggested.
Rather, yeah, so I think that's what you're suggesting and I think that's a good suggestion.
I just wonder, I, I wonder if this is significant enough to ask the Planning Commission to review it and try and come up with a better solution that's, you know, it's, obviously it's going to be a compromise.
Frankly, the intent of the Planning Commission is to facilitate events, to give you good events to evaluate this and to provide a process that works for both city staff who are trying to apply what you'd like to do.
Right.
And, you know, if you do it by the event, that's fine. I don't think that changes the intent of what Planning Commission was trying to do. So, yeah, if you want, if you want, if you want to do it, I'll just go through and amend the notifications and bring it back for another first reading.
Do we have event applicants who are chomping at the bit right now?
This would not, yeah, we've decided that pretty much we're, we've got all the applications that we have for this summer already in, so none of this would be impacting this year's events.
Yeah, well, that's good. Okay, well, that was my question and, and comment all wrapped into one. Oh, I, so I want to go to public comment and then I do have another comment I'd like to make and there may be others of you. Are we ready to do that, go to public comment? Yes.
Hi, I'm Andy Fuso with the Mount Shasta Bioregional Ecology Center. I live in Weed and I want to thank the work. I'm coming in this a little late to give the last-minute critique now that you've done all this work on it, so I appreciate that and I appreciate that looking over the ordinance today, it does look like it's a big improvement over the last one. So I compliment and thank Juliana for that and also for reading my email I sent her at 4:00 or whatever it was. And I don't really have a whole lot more to say because she answered all my questions in a lot of ways. I, I do have a couple of comments, just kind of speaking to what you were saying and trying to struggle with what the date should be and so forth. And I think one potential solution would be to have your small, medium, and large sizes because somebody who's doing the 300-person event in a month, you might be able to pull it off. Somebody who's going to do a major concert in Shastis Park, they're not going to do that in a month or, and as you rightly said, if you're, if you're going to be trying to find a musician that's got a tight touring schedule, you're going to be booking that person way in advance for sure. You know, our experience this weekend with Earth Day was generally pretty great. I mean, we had a great event, city staff was great. I, part of my comments that I've got here really has to do with how do we make the user-friendly interface to people that want to come to you and produce an event, who may be volunteers, they may not have the experience or the skills about managing something and how do we make sure that they don't do any mistakes that are, you know, make a dog bite them, which happened to us last year. And, you know, we, we do a decompression of our Earth Day event and we try to make sure we have a different mistakes that we make the next year. We always will have some little point of indigestion there that, that we can do. Again, I think, I would encourage you to think about it in terms of, of the fees and expenses and the timelines, maybe in like a small, medium, and large and you can, there's a step function in my experience that happens with events, you know, once you get over 100 people, things happen, 500 people, 5,000 people. You go, I don't think we're going to have too many events for more than 5,000 people in the town, but you tailor that to the situation a little bit. And I guess the final thing I'd say is there, if there's a way to help promote these events, I mean, make it user-friendly, have one human who does these things and it's one-stop shopping. So we, you know, we did have people going back and forth and annoying the city staff about the, the business licenses and stuff like that and it was, I'm sure it was just as hard on them as it was on us. So if we can make this really streamlined, really friendly, I think that this is going to be a great ordinance, a great positive thing for you.
Thank you, Andy. Other comments?
John Kennedy, Mount Shasta. The only thing I had here was I was concerned about sporting events instead of here, like sporting tournaments and stuff like that. And it sounded like you were going to address that.
What's the reference, John? I've forgotten what we say about sporting tournaments.
Well, in number four, it says down here that for, to be a special event, and you read all the way down through here, it says sports and it says like tournaments. So I would think soccer will run into it, Little League will run into it, softball will run into this, this situation. Are they going to be required to get a permit? You said something about the rec department, as long as it went through the rec department, which I didn't read in here before, it's something new, it might be okay.
Yep, Planning Commission added, sorry, Planning Commission added an exemption where if the, if you're in a park facility and it's approved by the park and it's under 100 people, which typically those events are pretty much around that, it's exempt.
Okay, because, yeah, some, some of the softball tournaments are held by maybe a business or something else, but they're just holding it through the park, but it would be okay. The other thing, your signs for promoting, the eight signs and stuff like that, I don't know how many events they would have that would have more than eight signs, you know, and even if they did, you have a limit on them of 14 days, they got to be taken down. So, you know, I, I, we want to encourage, you know, things to happen here in the community and that might be one of them that we should, you know, go along with what, you know, instead of having a limit on the eight signs. Thank you.
Any other comment? So, yes, I'm, I'm closing the public comment and now going to any more council discussion that there may be.
Yes, on 7.30.040, that currently reads "exceptions." I suggest that that be changed to exemptions.
Exemptions, okay. So what's the process here? Do we need to get, is this made in an amendment form? What do we, how's this work? An amendment to a motion or do we have to have all the council people agree with an individual's comment? What's the process?
Typically, typically for Planning Commission, if we do have recommendations made and it appears that there is a unanimous approval, we just move forward with what people want. If someone disagrees with it, then we take a vote on making the amendment or not. Is that okay, Kathy? My understanding and feeling of the council so far is I haven't heard anyone object to anything Tim or any of the other council members has brought up, so I've just made notes to do that.
To, to do what?
To make the changes that are being asked for.
And then it will run it by the Planning Commission again or just make the changes?
No, none, none of the changes you've put forward really changes the intent on what Planning Commission wanted to do. So if you change the days, I don't think that'll, I mean, I can ask them at the next meeting, but I doubt that they'll care about the days, frankly. Now, if you were to go through and start changing a bunch of the definitions and changing the intent, then I would recommend to take it back, but if it's just the days, that doesn't really change the intent.
So you don't need to take it back to planning, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's up to you guys too. If you feel that there are enough amendments that are things that need to be considered more fully, you can recommend that it goes back to planning with the, with the concerns of X, Y, Z. So same thing for graphics when we get to that. Your choices as a city council is you can approve the first reading, you can recommend amendments and then bring it back for another first reading, you can refer back to Planning Commission with a list of concerns that you would like addressed, or you can deny the first reading.
How do we go with, just go for another reading, another first reading?
So, in terms of my suggestion that 7.30.040, just change it from exceptions to exemptions because we're basically exempting? Is that agreeable with council?
No problem, no, here, that's fine.
And in terms of, I, I agree with the mayor that it would be better to... And in terms of, I, I agree with, uh, the mayor that, um, it would be better to base the timeframes from date of application rather than from date of event, so. Is that agreeable with, with other council members?
Yes.
All right.
And, and may I add to that? Or, in terms of saying what that number is, I, I would, I would prefer that, that Planning Commission or staff come back with what that number is, but it, it's just, it's a change in orientation.
How about I just go back to city staff who review these and ask them how long it typically takes? I mean, what I would say is it typically takes three weeks to get all of the department heads educated on the application to meet at least once.
And is this irrespective of, excuse me, is this irrespective of the size of the event? Was, was the comment made by Andy pertinent here?
Um, so we intend on having different pricing for the different events, for the permits, because it's going to take more review. We anticipate most major events, even, even Fourth of July, which is pretty consistent, that has, I want to say at least five or six events, or five or six meetings of most of the department staff prior to that event. So yes, the major events are going to cost more. It's maybe not going to cost exactly six, because we're going to take an average of the meetings we have, but for minor events, it usually takes one or two full staff meetings, or just one, and then, you know, subsequent department heads following up. So the, the price is going to be different, but as far as the timeframe, I would argue it, it takes about three weeks to get the department heads' schedules aligned to have that, that joint meeting.
Let me suggest that we keep the time period of 30 days for minor events. If we're going to change it to 45 days for major events?
I would just still caution against that one. We picked the 45 days because of food vendors, so minor events can still have food vendors, but if they see that, they don't have to submit an app to us by 30 days, and we see they have a food vendor and they didn't talk to the health department, that kind of puts a monkey wrench into their issues, and if we're trying to promote these things, we want to be able to give them time to respond to the different entities that govern these things.
Forty-five days, well, 45 days can be a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Not, not a long time for 45-day-
But do you want to put extra language in about food vendors, something with 45 days?
Well, there's, there's already, there, there is already in here fudge time, where, uh, on, for good reason, good cause, um, staff can approve lesser period of time. So if-
So if they come in 30 days before the event, they don't have food vendors, it'll go through anyway, right?
Well, it'll-
They're not going to say, oh, but you're not meeting the 45.
Well, that's, that's my, that's, that's my concern.
I'd probably still take the app.
Yeah, I would think that that would be the case, but, but again, what we're trying to do is encourage events, uh, and for a minor, e, special event, 45, 45 days can be considered a long time.
So where are we at with this one?
That's my thinking. So we've, we've lived successfully with 30 days for I don't know how many years in the special events ordinance.
Yeah, but you want them to have successful events, so if they do have food vendors, you want to give them plenty of time to do get their health, their health count.
So let's just take a, a vote on it. Um, Tim's proposing that we leave it at 30 days rather than 45. Are there others?
At least for, at least for minor events.
At least for minor events. Are there others that agree with that? Are there others that agree?
Minor event, yeah, I think so. What, what do you think?
So we can just, we can just do it similar to what council, Mayor Protem Wagner is saying. Sorry, I use your first names a lot. Um, what we can just do is applications, include, applications which include food vendors shall be filed no less than 45 days ahead of time, and applications without food vendors, no less than 30.
How's that? That sounds like a good compromise.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we, we do put in the application, "Do you have food vendors?" And we can put a little blurb that says, "If you have food vendors, please see the public health people."
Excellent.
So hopefully that way, no one will say they didn't know, but they will.
And, um, what about other, the streamlining comment that Andy had? Um, is there any clues as far as what, what he means?
My understanding is just streamlining as far as the application, getting it in and getting it out. Um, you know, we do, actually, I think we have in the past done a very good job of getting people in and out as much as possible while still having all the considerations in line. Um, I think it could be better with the application. I think a lot of his comments are concerned with the implementation side of it, which is the education we provide people ahead of time, information packets. So we do have to redo the application, and so doing those in a more communicative manner, I think, would address that.
Okay, so the user-friendly sort of way?
Mm-hmm.
So I have a couple of comments. One that I would also like to echo the comment made about how much I appreciate Planning Commission's work on this one and, and the sign ordinance. Lots and lots of work on these, and I, you know, I appreciate your responsiveness and the hours that have gone into it. And, you know, the fact that one of them cruised the downtown area to ask about impact of traffic closures, that's number one, so thank you, and please pass that on, on behalf of us, to the commissioners. The second one is, um, this downtown traffic closure issue is, is, concerns, concerns me. I would, I would request, because we don't really, it was the first time I've heard that there's at least some data, but I, I, among downtown business owners about the, their perception of the impact of event-caused downtown traffic closures. I would like to request that perhaps DIAC or somebody, in combination with the chamber, that, that the city and the chamber need to be on the same page when it comes to the policy, the, uh, how we evaluate whether or not we're going to close Mount Shasta Boulevard. Are there alternatives to placing farmer's market or some other event in another, on another block, on another street in downtown, et cetera, et cetera? So I would like to see a survey done of our business owners in the, in that, you know, downtown area that the DIAC covers, uh, an official survey put out by the city and the chamber to, 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 um, to really get some data about, back about the impact, and, and perhaps explore some alternatives, and perhaps somebody could bring that up at the rethink event on Thursday. I can't be there, I'll be out of town. Uh, I, I, I think it's time to be able to ask people and then come up with, uh, some alternative solutions to the impact, those events impacting just the same businesses over and over again, and then, and we may decide it'll stay that way, but let's have some data first about having surveyed people.
If I may add to that. Juliana, I think probably four people on this city council were not here when Keith McKinley did his survey and report. It would probably be helpful to the council members to provide that, uh, report, that analysis to the council members, to each of the council members.
If I can find it. Um, what I was, what my recommendation would be is to, um, basically charge DIAC with looking at it, because most of those events are in the downtown area, and I know they've been doing some work with events. Um, maybe they have some input on how to approach that. I wouldn't necessarily recommend doing a survey, maybe they have a better way of how they want to do it, but maybe just charging them with that, and then coming to-
Systematic, whatever it is.
Yeah, I think the big thing for Planning Commission is, uh, we would like to assess what they come up with, but I think as far as, you know, the responsible agency for, for that type of thing, I think definitely DIAC's recommendation to council would be the, the most streamlined way of dealing with it, with just a informational, um, piece to Planning Commission.
And I think that, that same-
Yes.
This item is already on DIAC's next agenda.
Okay, and I, I would ask that Keith McKinley's report be submitted to DIAC as well, because that report actually, uh, found that with at least the farmer's market, that most businesses actually had an increase in business rather than decrease. It actually helped their business, but I think rather than just talk about it, it's best to see the report.
Okay, thank you.
Um, heat is an issue, that black, uh, tar, in especially Fourth of July venues, if they have any kind of products, like salves and food products. It's, those things are getting heated up, you know, the, the lotions are melting, you know, so it's consideration, like, the heat that we're exposing our, our vendors to by having it right there on the street, it's really tough in July, and it's going to get hotter.
I think the question will be, if we chose to move it to a, a park and, and a green-shaded environment, would there be the business, and therefore would they, you know, what would be the impact on those vendors? So that's, that's, that's the kind of feedback we would need, so. Okay, are we, um, so we're, uh, I guess we need a, a motion that we, that we have?
Make a motion that we, uh, bring this back before, uh, council at a future meeting for a further first reading.
With, with the recommended amendments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, also, that's, I'm tired. Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for your patience, Juliana.
It's okay. This is my job.
Okay, we move now to, uh, item number nine on the agenda, first reading of ordinance number CCR-18, uh, amendments to the sign ordinance. Back to you, Juliana.
So the, uh, Planning Commission has been working on amendments to the sign ordinance for almost a year now. Um, signs, uh, more commonly referred to now as graphics, it's the new best practice definition, so I'm going to switch over to using that word, but they're pretty much same thing. Um, graphics are not an easy thing to regulate, because graphics fall under the freedom of speech, and so when cities go to regulate graphics, you have to walk a very fine line of, um, regulation there. In addition to that, the whole purpose, and, uh, I did kind of put the five criteria for evaluating street graphics for effectiveness is on page 66, the whole point of this is we want to balance the community design, the architectural design of buildings, our scenic vistas, with a business's ability to put out a commercial message, and so we try to approach it in that balanced sort of way. Um, and the other thing, too, is by relaxing regulations, you may actually create a more difficult environment for businesses to sign as well, because if you have too many signs, people don't really know where to look, um, and it tend, it can tend to be very cluttered. So we're trying to balance a lot of different factors with this graphic. So I'm just going to go basically to the recommendations. I was recommending a complete change in the graphics ordinance to address, um, current changes in sign regulation, which happened in 2015, um, which is now everything must be content neutral, and that includes colors and designs has to be content neutral, um, which presents a very unique challenge. Um, so what we've done is we've gone through and changed, the Planning Commission is, um, we ended up not doing the full ordinance revision, um, due to the Planning Commission wanting to wait for more of the general plan to get done. One of the big things is focusing on the new community vision, and the upcoming, uh, general plan may change how we look at urban design and how people see our community, um, so they didn't want to make any changes to the current language related to that, as well as the current prohibited or allowed signs. Um, they didn't want to change any of that at the time. Another thing they did not elect to change in this round is the graphic zones. Um, the new best practice for dealing with that is assigning graphic types by zoning code, and so when I review that, um, I had recommended going to the zoning code, Planning Commission was in favor of that, but if we're going to change the zoning code in the general plan process, they'd just like to wait until that happens, and then they have already, um, uh, voted to revisit this after the general plan's done to address the design and to address the graphic zone zoning code issue. Um, so Planning Commission, in the meantime, did, uh, is recommending some changes to make the system a little bit more flexible and streamlined. Uh, the main thing being the sizing, we've removed the maximum square footage for flush-mounted signs, and we're recommending a sizable area calculation. So what it does is it takes the architectural detail of a building, so where the windows are located, um, where columns are located, um, borders, things like that, and it allows you to sign per percentage of that area. What that does is it creates a sign that's proportional to the rest of the building. So one of the big, um, examples we use is actually one of John Kennedy's buildings, which is the Crystal Keepers Building. One of the sides of that building is quite expansive, and to say you're only allowed a 32-square-foot maximum sign, the owner of the building is actually on Planning Commission, he actually mapped out how big a 32-square-foot sign would be on those large walls, and it just looks out of place. It doesn't really do anything for the character of the building, it doesn't really do anything to enhance the design of the community, and so when you actually calculate it out to, I believe the recommendations Planning Commission has is 60%, um, you end up getting a sign that's much more proportional for those areas, and it actually ends up being more visually pleasant to people. Um, people instinctually like things in proportions, um, so being in proportion will actually help enhance that area. Uh, one thing to also bring up is this graphic ordinance does not govern murals with a non-commercial message, so if you're painting a large crystal on the side of the crystal shop, that is not covered by this. Um, Planning Commission has elected not to include the non-commercial murals in this ordinance. They're, they're debating, um, creating a new ordinance to deal with non-commercial murals.
Hold on, but if that's a crystal shop and you paint a crystal, isn't that commercial?
Technically, it does not have a commercial message. It, it complements the commercial message, but they're not putting their store name, they're not saying, "Enter here," things like that. So that's kind of how we, we thread that, that needle. Um, the other big thing we did besides the sizable area for flush-mounted signs, we'd not increased the maximum allowed height of freestanding signs, or the maximum allowed square footage of, uh, freestanding signs. Um, we decided to wait for the design piece to come out a little bit more in the general plan before we did that. Um, the other big things we did, we brought the definitions in our ordinance up to industry standards. Um, the industry standards we followed are from the American Planning Association and the United States Sign Council, which is a thing, surprisingly, there's a thing for everything. Um, so they have a list of definitions they recommend for everyone, they've gone through legal tests in a number of different states, as well as legal tests on the national scale. So we're recommending those. Um, the other benefit of that is it encompasses a lot of other types of signs that we haven't included in the past. You know, the flag banners for automobile dealers is technically not a banner, so our current definition of a banner didn't cover that, but now our temporary graphics definition covers that situation. Um, the other, uh, big thing we did was clarify non-conforming signage. So the four things listed on page 70, um, those four things are allowed for non-conforming signs. So non-conforming sides are signs that don't meet the current ordinance standards, so a really good example is Best Western. Best Western has quite a few non-conforming signs. Um, our current ordinance basically states that any resurfacing, any color change to those signs, you have to bring them into compliance. That's illegal. Um, they are allowed by right to resurface those signs, as long as there's no expansion of the sign's square footage or changes there. It's not, uh, it's not, um, being rebuilt from being destroyed. We set a limit of 50% on that. That's the same that we would be recommending for homes, is that if it's destroyed over 50% of the square footage or value, um, it's not allowed to continue as a, a non-conforming sign. It would have to be brought into. But if it's, say, you know, gets hit by a tree and only part of it is dented, they're allowed to restore it as is, um, to that previous sign. Uh, abandonment, we've added some languages for that. If a non-conforming sign is abandoned past a certain point, we have, we can go in and, and bring it down or bring it into compliance. And then a change in the nature of the use, um, that's a, so for example, if a restaurant were to move into Brooks Auto Body Shop, they would be asked to take down the suburban propane sign. That's a large, significant change in use for that. So, uh, the other final one is the major changes is that we are recommending to move from discretionary permits to administrative permits for all signs. Uh, basically what that does is planning department will just deal with all signs as they come in. They will be still required to get a building permit if they have, um, large structures or anything like that, um, but as far as, uh, the change in types of permitting, it makes it faster for businesses to get through the process, and it makes it less expensive. Uh, Planning Commission, we did add language that at any time can request to review a, uh, a permit, a signed permit for compliance, and if they find that it's not in compliance, or if it's illegally existing, we will then go forward and enforce that. Um, like I said, it, it helps bring down the cost to businesses applying for signs, and it helps, uh, speed up that process as far as sign approval. Um, and then within that, there are just some minor revisions, so- So especially in the general provisions, they were kind of all over the place. And so I tried to group the general provisions that pertain to each other. So all the freestanding, or I can't remember what it is now. So all the freestanding signs are all together now. And then all of the other signs are all together, so I just grouped them. So it was just an organization thing. We did present all these, or we presented early on to the Open for Business and gathered some information. They seemed very positive with the changes in allowable sign area. There is a push for more, more flexibility with the signs. Since doing the changes, I have had a few, Best Western's pretty happy with it. We're trying to fix some of their stuff. And then a few other business owners have been waiting for this to go through because they're waiting to get their new flush mounted signs that are more appropriately sized. So overall, I know John and I have met a couple, John Kennedy Senior and I have met a couple of times. And I did make some tweaks into the ordinance based on some of his input. Some of the stuff in his letter to you guys and myself is opinion. And I told him I couldn't really do anything about that unless the Planning Commission and City Council agrees with him. So I told him to bring those up to you guys because you guys make that choice for some of those. But overall, the general feedback has been favorable with the recommended changes that we have. And I think a lot of people are looking to see more change in the future.
Thank you. Questions for Juliana?
When Best Western rebranded, they, they basically just resurfaced an existing sign, right? They didn't change any sizes or anything.
Correct. Which that is allowable under non-conforming policies. So what we do in that case, so I did add that as a cost because I found out it does take quite a bit of time to locate their original permit that they have. So I have added that as a, as an application and a cost for city time. For Best Western's sake, it probably took me close to a couple of weeks to find all of their original permitting to ensure that they were not exceeding their square footage, that they were abiding by their original permit parameters. So it took some time to do that. So I did put that in here to recover some cost for city staff time.
Yeah, so the ice cream, we put out a temporary sign in front of the visitor's center. Without me reading into detail, do we have to approach you on this in the future?
Yep.
That's what I thought, okay.
And the temporary graphics permit is not going to be free anymore because it's, still takes up my time. And like I said, permits aren't there to make money, but it does take time to review things, to work with people. The temporary graphics permit is not going to be very expensive, but it at least needs to account for some of the time I spend on that.
I think there are some other rec district type signs around town. How we, again, without reading all the details there, how are those going to be dealt with if they already exist?
So we, under the exempt graphics, a street graphic that is posted by a governmental unit, I believe in the past we have considered the Park District a governmental unit. And I believe I did get questions from some of the City Council members about the school district digital sign and why that's allowed to continue. That's not considered a non-conforming sign because school district signs are exempt from city ordinances. We do work with them to encourage them to, you know, like I said, that's the big thing with city and governmental units. We work to abide by our own rules, but we do not technically have to do them.
Same with the banner at the library.
Yep. And I did work with the library and they did get a temporary banner permit and they put it up for the allowable days and they did abide by that.
Paul, do you have anything?
Debating whether I need to recuse myself from this because I do own two businesses and they do affect me. So I think I'm going to do that.
Just recuse yourself?
Yeah.
Including asking any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's clean. It's been a while since I reviewed this because we had it on the last month, last time agenda. Is there any reference in here, Juliana, to directional signing?
I believe that is exempt.
So, so you know, we have a plethora of directional signing. And, and I don't know who gets to make the decision about what gets signed and what doesn't. But I wonder if in, in, in
Sorry.
In preparation, you could answer that, but then in preparation for the general plan, will there be an opportunity to come up, come up with a designed wayfinding system? Where everything, we have a design that's agreed to for, for this kind of sign and we agree to what kinds of things should be signed directionally and, and help people make their way through, through town. Visitors make their way through town, that kind of thing.
So as I stated before, street graphics that are posted by governmental units are exempt from this. And then I do know in a subsequent ordinance for public right of ways, we do put in there that no, and I think it might be referenced in here somewhere. There's one line that says, non-government signs cannot be placed on city right of way. And we have, we have an approval process for putting things on our streets or street poles and things like that. So technically, when you see people's garage sale this way sign, that's technically illegal. And I believe we did have a code officer who took those down when he saw them. So as far as the directional, typically what we would do is we would propose a sign program to the City Council for something like the wayfinding. But we would be under that governmental unit exemption.
Okay, and does it make sense to you to include that in the general plan process? When we talk about the design, the overall community design and character of our city, would that be an aspect of it? For instance, we've got certain kinds of signs that point to the Forest Service and other signs that point to the hospital. And then we got the museum and then we have motels and there's, I don't understand, you know, it would be so much nicer if it could be consistent coloring and all of that and
I got my wayfinding handbook in the mail two weeks ago. So it's on the list of things to do. So we are doing, the general plan is not going to focus on wayfinding specifically, but we are asking about preferred places. We're asking about communities design in general. So those can be wrapped into that. So I've been programming different aspects of it to wrap into other projects people want. So yes, we can do that, but it will take time.
It's, it's, you know, I just, I'm thinking that if we're asking business owners to conform to some of these things, we should be conforming to some things as well.
Yeah.
And it's, and our own signing does create, does contribute to the, to the visual pollution. You know, it may be helpful, but it's, it could be better.
And as I stated before, Planning Commission has already elected to want to review the ordinance again after the general plan.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Or once more of it is done to do that.
Let's see. I have, oh, go ahead. I'm just reading. I have John's letter in front of me, so now, you know, he has a hexagonal building and it came up when I was on Planning Commission that his street view is sort of multi-wall. You know, like I would say even three, three walls, I think, are street view.
I think most of them are. Yeah, we've
Well, the other ones are in the parking lot. I'm just saying for the main street.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about his case and that would definitely be, you know, the planner always has the, has the discretion to take a permit or an issue to the Planning Commission. And in John's case, I wouldn't necessarily charge him more to do this, but in that case, I would take it to Planning Commission for determination. My assessment personally would be that, I believe it's like six of it. I don't actually remember how many sides that your building has, if it is hexagon or not. But we had talked about this, that a majority of those walls are in public view. And under this new ordinance, the way we have it stated, each one in public view would be allowed a certain percentage of that wall being covered. So there would be some concession about, you know, it would have to be brought down slightly in size to meet those percentages, but he would be allowed to have multiple walls have them.
So each one, each one would be a frontage wall? Okay, that's how you'd look at it?
That's how I would interpret it. But like I said, in that case, I think I would go to Planning Commission for their consideration. And we're always going to have buildings that are unique like that. And so it is really nice in the, in the municipal code, I do have that fallback of the planner can call upon the Planning Commission at any time to help with a determination.
Question about public comment. I'm a bit surprised that, John, you're representing our residents and our business owners here, that there aren't more people here. So my question is, I know you presented this to Open for Business. What kind of feedback did you get from, from those folks?
As I said in my staff report, the initial meeting I had was fairly positive. They just asked a lot of questions about previous stuff. We hadn't fleshed out this ordinance yet, but we took into consideration their need for more flexibility. I know John and I have discussed, and like I said, I think the bigger thing is people wanted a little bit more of this ordinance tweaked. But like I said, Planning Commission made that call. So if it is your purview to tweak more of this ordinance or take some concerns back to Planning Commission, we can. But we anticipate doing that anyway as we can move forward. Like I said, these changes were pretty much just to help with some of the, I guess a good way of putting it is growing pains with the old ordinance, with the permitting and the, the maximum sign thing. As far as other business owners, we have had input from other business owners. Like I said, we do have a couple on Planning Commission that, that were thinking about it, which was really nice to have that perspective on Planning Commission. We did have, I have talked, like I said, I've been in conversation with Best Western for about eight, nine months now. And they are eagerly, eagerly waiting to meet their trademark mandates. So I've been working with them to do something that works for them as well as the community. And then a couple others I've talked to who said that they like the new one, so.
I have another question. I've heard many comments about how it is we, the city has violated its own standards by putting signs on the landing. You know, I don't like it when we impose constraints on other people and then we don't, we don't, we don't do it ourselves. I don't know that that, you know, that that form of marketing is, is gonna, is gonna get us the kind of development we're looking for. I just soon, I think we could score a lot of points if we took those signs down.
We've actually taken a few down, actually. Two or three? Yeah. Two down.
What did you say?
We've taken two of them down already because of wear and tear graffiti. So, I mean, it's up to the council how you guys want to do that. Typically, you know, in, in my assessment as a city staff member is that should be, if we do something outside the realm of our own ordinance, we should at least get either Planning Commission or your approval prior to doing that for city property. But like I said, I wasn't here for that, so.
I know. Well, I don't know what it would take, if it would take a, a separate motion for us to do that, but.
Yeah, I think that'd be a separate action item for another day.
Yes, Tim.
Thank you. Through the chair. In terms of garage sale signs, garage sale, garage sales are a big summertime activity in Mount Shasta. And there are going to be garage sale signs whether we allow them or not. I would suggest, yeah, I would suggest that we put in some provision allowing garage sale signs, telephone poles, require that they have contact information on there. So, and require that they be taken down within X hours or days after the garage sale. I think that's more realistic than prohibiting garage sale signs completely. And if, that way there can be enforcement if they're not taken down, but I think it was, I think it was Jonathan Swift who said, "A law," no, maybe it was Ben Franklin, anyway, doesn't matter. "A law too strict will not be enforced. A law too lenient will not be obeyed." So we're, again, we're trying to find that proper balance. So I suggest that we write something in that would be applicable to garage sale, estate sale, that sort of thing. And I, I didn't see that in there right now. I apologize, I didn't make, I didn't scan a copy of the, the notes I gave to Juliana last week.
Yeah. Was there a reference to that?
Neither one of us brought that.
In there, Juliana?
So not, so specifically, signs that are not the city's are referenced in a different ordinance for right of way consideration. So even if you were to allow it in this, you would have to then amend that other ordinance before you'd be allowed to do it. Because as it sits right now, that other ordinance, I have to find it. I think it's in the vehicles section. I, I can't remember, but Rod's the one in charge of that stuff for right of way. So theoretically, if you were going to allow that, you would have to treat it like a sandwich board sign, where they would have to get a sign permit for the sign itself and then they'd also have to get an encroachment permit to put it in the city right of way. If you were going to do it properly.
Or, or we can amend the process.
I mean, but you're also running into the risk of, you know, that blocking someone's view shed, someone, I mean, sillier things have happened. People run into things like that and then want to sue the city for liability. And that's why we do the encroachment permit for anything in our right of way.
So I would suggest that we have something in there that allows garage sale signs and estate sale signs, number one. Number two, I apologize to John Kennedy Senior. I did not have a chance or did not take adequate time to go through your detailed suggestions and observations. I'd like to have an opportunity to do that. Number three, do we have provision in there for historic signs like cannons and like Vets Club?
So if they're a registered historic sign, yes. But I do not believe the Vets Club or cannons is registered historic yet. So we do have that in there as exemptions, as historic markers and things like that, and historically registered signs. Yeah. I think they're pretty cool signs, so we can do whatever we can to help maintain those. And they are allowed to maintain them. They are non-conforming, so as long as they don't change the size or anything like that, where if they become historic, they can. So right now, if, if say, for example, one of the neon tubes goes out, they are allowed to go in and repair that. So that, I think the intent for what you would like to do with those signs is already there.
What about, John, I think asked about graphics on awnings. We have that in there in this draft, is that correct?
We do, we do allow graphics on awnings. I believe the question that you had posed was marquee graphics. So marquee graphics are the changeable, like movie theater style, which are already canopies themselves. Yeah, so you can do that. So that's part of the marquee. So you wouldn't theoretically put a marquee on top of a canopy because the marquee graphic itself is a canopy. So I think what you're thinking about is the projectile signs.
I was thinking the front end of the marquee. A marquee can be a flush mounted on a wall, not stick out from the wall.
So the marquee in this definition sticks out. So if it's flush mounted, it's a flush mounted sign. And you can do changeable copy in flush mounted already.
Or if it's on, if it's on the inside of, of the building, then
They can do it whenever they want. That's not considered in this ordinance.
Right. What about banners across Mount Shasta Boulevard or other streets? Or should I just say graphics?
So we put provisions in the special event ordinance for special event related banners over the street. Actually took a measurement of the Fourth of July banner and that is allowed under the special events ordinance if it's related to that. As far as banners over the street right now, I believe we had this situation where they would, under this, they would have to get a, basically a temporary graphic. It'd have to be kind of non-conforming, basically. If it's associated with something else, I have to look for the sizing. Basically, you wouldn't be allowed to just put a large banner across the street. But if it's associated with a special event, it would be, be in their special event permit. Yeah, the, the difficulty with that and allowing those is they also have to get an encroachment permit. And there's a lot of special safety circumstances for taller trucks that tend to traverse that street.
You also changed the existing height from seven and a half feet from ground to eight foot minimum from the ground.
That is a building code regulation. So the building code requires that all signs over a public walkway be eight feet or higher.
Okay, so that must be a change from
Correct.
The past, okay. I would like to look at this further, but that's all the questions I have right now.
I, I'd like you to respond, Juliana, to the statement that John made near the beginning of his comments. I'll just read it. "I understand that many in this community don't want the commercial signs to be overbearing and standing out. But most of these people have not tried to make a living being in the retail business and the need to catch the attention of customers. Having good signage that can catch the eye of a potential customer to check out your business is a great asset, much better than having an empty storefront." Is there any, any data we have, any research, anything other than, you know, this makes sense to me, but what, how do, how do we weigh the benefits of more conforming, consistent signage with the need for a business owner to get people's attention? How did you, how did you weigh in on that?
There, there is a lot of data as far as the type of sign that you have for the type of business that you have. And so there are different types of things. So for example, the purpose of this, and I'll go back to those four questions that were at the beginning of the staff report, that's how you assess whether a sign is effective or not. So if you're looking at a downtown or a pedestrian-oriented area of the city, projectile signs, which are currently prohibited, but I have a feeling Planning Commission, when they get more design background in the general plan, will allow those. Projectile signs, flush-mounted signs are much more productive than a freestanding sign, for example, in some cases. As far as total income for businesses, I mean, signage is important when put in the context of the architecture and put in the context of other signs. As far as hard data to suggest the percentage of sales it increases or the percentage of sales lost, there isn't a lot of data on physical signage. Most of the data nowadays points to your digital profile, or what does your Yelp say? What does your Facebook or website say? There's a ton of information on that. And actually, a lot of the success of a retail business, or what we call an active use, hinges more on the digital format than a solid sign. But, you know, going back to John's observation in that report, I mean, it's opinion. So I can't really discuss that as far, because I'm, one, I'm not a business owner. I can only look at the data that's allowable to planners as a whole. You know, yes, if you have a business inside of an empty storefront, it's gonna make it more economic, it will benefit everyone else economically. That's pretty much a sure thing. As far as signs being the make or break for a business, you know, I can't logically see that being an issue. But like I said, I don't own a business, so it's gonna be up to personal opinion for that. I mean, if you look at Handsome John Speakeasy, he doesn't have a sign. I mean, you can look at a number of different types of, I mean, secret bars are now a thing in major cities. But, you know, like I said, when it comes down to actual signage, and backing up and looking at what we've done in this recommended proposal is we've made it easier for businesses to get larger flush-mounted signs. We've made it easier for businesses to get through the process. We've made the non-conforming process much more clear so people understand what they're allowed to do. So I think we're taking steps in that direction. Like I said, I feel like a lot of people want more change to happen. But like I said, Planning Commission's recommendation was to wait for more of the general plan to get done in the design and zoning category before doing that.
One more question.
Okay, last questions.
Juliana? Is the sign, is the graphics application online? And if not, can we go ahead and get it online?
So the current application is available online. So our new application is not. So we would have to redo the application process to help this out. One of the big things is the cost associated with it is not calculated correctly, but that's a much longer story for when I bring the resolution for the cost of the permits.
Barbara?
Hey, going over John's letter again. I noticed you have the two zones, zone one and zone two. And the zone one is not necessarily the downtown enhancement zone. It's a different zone. And I guess he was asking, you know, why not just do the downtown enhancement zone versus this sign zone? And then, and then internally lit signs are allowed only in zone two, but not zone one. You want to talk on that a little bit?
We did not touch any of the graphic zones because Planning Commission would like to wait until more of the zoning is determined. Because typically, they do it by zoning code and special graphic district, like a historic district. So I, we did not recommend any changes to that.
Okay.
The reason why they have the internally lit in two is because it's closer to the freeway and they have more gas stations. So. But yeah, we did not recommend any changes to that at this time.
And I'm quickly looking at some kind of solar, solar illumination should be allowed, he's saying. And I'm going to 8.40, 0.110.
He, he and I talked about this, and he wanted to have solar lighting for portable graphics. And those are like sandwich board signs. Right now, we don't, we don't allow any lighting on them. One of the biggest things is we also require that they be taken in at night.
So you're talking solar-powered lighting?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I was thinking in terms of the, you know, the restaurant, you think they're gonna have a board out there. You guys pass an okay for Lucio's to be out on the side of all at one time. But they never did, because there was a sandwich board fifteen months on the way out.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, that's right. I keep looking at you. So would you like to make a comment, John, in addition to what you have given us?
John Kennedy, Mount Shasta. Probably forty-five, forty-eight years ago, I got on the Planning Commission because of the fact that signage was very important to me. I'd just started in my own business, and the Sportsman's Den, and we're still surviving after almost forty-some years. But anyway, you know, what we're doing here is you're changing some of the sign. And the size of it was one of the best things. And back then was the same thing. We tried, we changed the size of the signs, but it slowly reverted back to small signs. This is what it ends up doing. And to me, in being in business, I find that, I found that the signage is probably at least half my business, especially when you have a tourist economy here. You know, you go down the street, how else, you know, right now, if the sign's too small, the tourists driving the car, trying to look at a sign, cannot see a flat, small sign. And having a perpendicular sign that you can see from, and see down the street is just a major plus to your business. The other thing that I'm concerned about too is the non-conforming. If you, even, Paul, your business, non-conforming sign that you have on your building, if you wanted to change the sign on the side of your building, you would have to take that sign down or make it conform. And there's a lot of businesses in town that are in that situation right now. We need to address that, you know, right now. You say three years when the general plan gets done. We don't know whether the general plan's gonna get done in three years. You're not gonna be here maybe in three years. You know, we don't know what's going on. But right now, you have an opportunity maybe to make some more minor changes in this ordinance before you go ahead and pass this thing. I realize there's businesses out there that really want, you know, their signs to be put up. But if you take another month or so just to get this thing done right, or a lot of these changes made, it would just really be a plus for our community, I think. But the Treehouse is a good example. They, what'd you say? They probably have five non-conforming signs on their property right now. They want to change, for, they want to change the front of their building that's been there for forty years when the building was built. It says Treehouse on there. They want to change that sign there. If they change that sign, according to this ordinance right now, you're gonna have to end up, they're gonna have to take those fines down. And before we get done, what I'd like to suggest to you is give the opportunity to the city manager and to the city planner to end up maybe being allowed to allow some of the changes. I don't know if you have that right now, you know, so if someone comes in, like the Treehouse, give them the opportunity, say, hey, yeah, we understand what's going on here. We're gonna allow you to go ahead and put that sign up.
Thank you, John.
That would be a major plus. The other thing is?
John. Hopefully you managed to get it in. Yes, we did. Yes, yes. Thank you. Okay, back to council discussion.
As any case, I'd like to have more time to look at this, look at John Kennedy's comments and go through it again. So I'd like to continue the matter till the next meeting.
Comments on that?
You want to comment on that? Well, we've already tabled this once, and so, and she said this is much more urgent than the event ordinance was. And she said that the planning department, Planning Commission spent like a year putting this together. So I want to support the Planning Commission and the planning, the planner, and say, for this go around. I think it's a good, a good first, a good time to go ahead and move this forward, especially since she has some people who are requesting some signage, and she wants to use this as a guideline, wants to be able to use this as a guideline. So I would, you asked for comments, that's my comment.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I just need some clarification on perpendicular signs. I drove around town observing all the different signage that we have, and it seems that there is clear demarcation between areas where signs are flush and where signs are allowed to be perpendicular. Right out here, they're perpendicular signs. You can see Cross Petroleum, easy to see. So John's point seems good to me, where we're not going to allow perpendicular signs.
So I think to clarify, what John's bringing up is he would like what are called basically protruding or perpendicular as affixed to a building.
To the face of the building, yeah.
Yeah. We don't have too many, as far as, you know, being able to put solid signs on. If you look at native grounds, they, those are non-conforming. But they, that's, they can do still the freestanding if there's available land there. As far as genuine projectile graphics, Berryvale is pretty much, that's a non-conforming as well. It's allowed to be maintained.
So you know, there are a lot of towns, I grew up in one, New York has this. You walk down the street, and there's overhanging, there's all these signs perpendicular to the building, so you know what's what walking down the street. You don't have to come out and take a look at the flush sign. You can just see the street, walking down the street, what stores you're approaching. We don't do that here in Mount Shasta.
Frankly, I agree. I think they're very cute, and they, that's a very technical term. And no, Dunzamir has them. They can be tastefully done. Planning Commission was not comfortable at this time adding them yet because they wanted more clarification on design and wanted more clarification because of previous sign ordinance that they went through a couple of years back. They did do some public outreach, and the majority of the public outreach they received was no projectile whatsoever, that it can be too much and too cluttery. So I think the big thing for them is they didn't feel comfortable at this time doing that. Now, if you would like to ask them to reconsider that, I think they can talk about it and come up with what appropriate sizing would be, things like that. But that would be my recommendation, is if you do want to go for those hanging or projectile graphics, to recommend that to the Planning Commission for reconsideration.
Sooner than the general plan.
Yeah. I think as far as requests go from businesses, I've only had one request, a hanging or projectile graphic like that. And when I told them they weren't allowed, they said a flush-mounted was fine. They do have a place. I think they should be considered in the future. Like I said, just with the data they had in the past and what we have to work with now for design base, they weren't comfortable at the moment. Like I said, it's up to you guys.
So we've had, we have a request to continue this item?
A motion.
A motion?
It wasn't a motion. It was, it was a comment.
Oh, sorry.
Again, I have, I don't have a copy of the written comments I made to the planner, which I'd like to take a look at versus what we have tonight. I haven't compared John Kennedy's suggestions with what's on here. So I just don't feel prepared to vote tonight. That's nobody else's problem but my own, but that's why I asked for some additional, some additional time.
Barbara's comment was she just assumed move ahead. John, do you have a?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait for a motion from somebody else.
Okay. Yeah, this is a complicated issue. I, I don't see how doing another two weeks, other than what you've said, Tim, not being quite prepared for tonight. I don't see how another two weeks is going to help us, or another month is gonna help us get clearer about any of this. So I think I'm going to just suggest that we move ahead with the ordinance and respect the work that's been done and disappoint some folks, including you, John. So I would, I don't typically make a motion, but is it?
Oh, I was just gonna say, you still have a second reading. So if you find something glaring between this one and the next, you can always recommend to change it. We do a first reading all over again. So this is not the final thing. You will have another two weeks and things like that.
Yeah, I would like to think about the perpendicular signs because we don't have this type of ordinance come to us very often. So if we're dealing with this ordinance now, we ought to consider, I think, the perpendicular signs now rather than three or four years from now.
So rather than a motion to approve the first reading, if we were to agree to move ahead with having the Planning Commission look at perpendicular signs, the motion would read that, that we'd like to return this to the, to the Planning Commission and have them address perpendicular sign issue. Is that a motion, Tim?
I'll make the motion, yes.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I'm just gonna stick with my first opinion that, you know, she said this was more urgent of the two ordinances. And, yeah, New York City is not Mount Shasta. I understand if you're walking along, you know, maybe vertical signs or perpendicular signs would be useful. I don't, I know, I know the process in plan. I'm familiar with many of the planners, and I know how time-consuming it is for them to reconsider something new. So you're talking, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take some time to go and look at a whole new proposal for them.
Could we, could we compromise on this? Could we do both? Could we theoretically approve moving on to the second reading and direct staff to ask the Planning Commission to address perpendicular signs?
As a separate issue.
As a separate issue.
We can do that? I mean, we're reviewing candidates with the New York, with the New York ordinance.
I mean, I'm not suggesting it displace other priorities you have, but it can, these perpendicular signs can really create, can contribute to a unique character of a town. If it's a process that works for you, perhaps we could do both.
Is there an issue with that?
The only thing making some money is the cost of building for this. Fairly expensive, and if you want to be, should be as worried, and all these things, do it all.
Ah, I see.
Okay.
Yeah, good point. Okay, well, so we have a motion. Let's see, what do we have? We have a motion to, and a second, to move it to a second reading.
No, to send it back.
To send it back.
Let me ask the, the second if he would be willing to accept amendment of the motion that that we continue this to the next city council meeting for purpose of considering by council perpendicular signs with perhaps input of staff. That might be a shorter process.
It would be, but I wouldn't feel comfortable, there's a, there's a lot that needs to go into the perpendicular sign aspect, that I wouldn't be able to come to the next meeting to do that, because I have to make sure, I have to figure out what's the exact dimensions that are going to be appropriate, how often can you have the, there's a lot that goes into it, that I would not feel comfortable without Planning Commission.
I won't make a change to the motion then. Stick with the motion that was moved and seconded.
To send it back to the Planning Commission for addition. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Nay.
Tie vote.
Tie vote.
It fails.
So, do we move on to the second reading? If that motion failed?
We're waiting for another motion.
So, we now need to motion, to move, okay, then I, I'll move that we, I'll move this on to the second reading.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Opposed.
Motion fails. So, now what do we do?
Paul, we need to, you want to get in trouble again?
He's recused himself.
Never, never been in this situation.
I move that we continue this to a first reading at the next meeting.
And you see what kind of resolution, or, you know, what difference do you see in a staff report? What will be different?
Well, he said that he has some, he wants to read it further.
That's right, read back through your notes.
And he wants to talk to John Kelly, and he wants to, he said he wants to educate himself.
All right, so we're just going to continue, the motion is to continue the first reading to the next council meeting, I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to continue it on to the next council meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Okay, well, thank you all very much for your participation and input, John. And we go to the last, next to last item, which is the recollection of outside meetings.
The mayor and I attended the Sis U County League of Local Agencies meeting in Fort Jones.
Yes.
I, one of the things I found interesting is that the city of Etna is working on a Parklet ordinance to allow for alfresco dining and using the Sacramento ordinance as its They, Etna's been very successful in having a couple of restaurants open in the past year. They now have two breweries and a distillery within walking distance of each other.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. The meeting was held at Five Mary's, recently opened in Fort Jones. Excellent, excellent beef. They dry, they age their beef, it was, it was an excellent meal. The meeting was preceded by a city selection committee meeting, which is comprised of all the mayors in the towns, and we, we did fill out the component of officers for that committee. We're responsible for receiving nominations and, and selecting members of a variety of committees. There's an airport committee, there's an LTAC, there's LAFCO.
Not LTAC, LTC.
LTC, thank you, thank you. And I believe one other committee. So, we looked at the, we looked at the composition of those. And as, as is usual for all the Lola meetings, we heard from each community about their events coming up, their happenings, their successes, their challenges, very, very fruitful. And that's it for me, thank you. So, future agendas.
So, in terms of future agenda, in light of what's coming up the next meeting, I suggest that 11 be moved either to the second meeting in May or the first meeting in June.
I'll second that.
Let me see, just a second. I have some other commitments on presentations, I want to make sure we don't double up, if possible. We have a clean and safe present-
I'm talking about the Community Land Trust presentation be moved.
It's a special presentation, a 15-minute, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I'm trying to avoid having two special presentations back-to-back on the same evening, I'm just checking to see what we've already committed to. We've committed to one on the 14th, and we, it's been suggested, it's been suggested that we have one on the 28th and the 11th of June. We haven't confirmed those.
So, what about the second meeting in May, then?
The second meeting in May would be what date?
May 28th.
We have one. Well, I guess we haven't confirmed, did we confirm with Caltrans to talk about their presentation, their work that they're doing from Dunsmere to Mount Shasta on the 28th? We did not. Okay, well, depending on when their work begins, it would be nice to hear from them before they begin the work, but I don't see any problem with putting, Tim, on the, on that 28th meeting and asking Caltrans, we'd be bumping them up to the second week in June.
Second meeting, you mean?
Second meeting in June, thank you.
Are we going to keep the breast cancer on the first meeting?
Ah, good point.
That's a good slot for it, since the others moved.
Which is the 14th?
Yeah.
Yeah, we may have to double up. Clean and Safe, he was unable to do it last time because of his surgery, and he, he wants to tell us what he did with the money that we, and also to request another allocation of budget, so I guess we could double up, and perhaps one of the other of you would be less than 30 minutes.
Also, before we go too far down the road, in terms of the landing and/or orchard property, I'd like us to, I'd like the city to try to get on the county board of supervisors' agenda to discuss tax sharing agreement amendment.
Well, I have a comment about that, because I think when I had a conversation with Ed Valenzuela, he said that he would like the city to better understand all the monies that the county contributes to the city surroundings, have a, basically, to get a bigger picture than to just focus on the landing agreement, that you get a better sense of all the finances that the county pumps into our area.
Well, we can certainly ask city manager or staff to contact Ed Valenzuela and get that information from, from the county, but we have a, a tax sharing agreement that I think is inequitable and needs to be addressed. Now, there's two ways of addressing it in my mind. One is to do that voluntarily, well, there's three ways. One is to do it voluntarily, another way is to just ignore the, the agreement, which isn't smart, just violate the agreement perhaps, and the third one is to go to court and see if we get a resolution that way. I don't like the latter two routes as much as I like going to the county and saying, let's renegotiate. And the county hasn't needed to-
So, this isn't on the agenda, right? We need to be careful about discussing it too much.
Yeah, I want to get that on the agenda so that we can move forward with it.
I wonder-
Because right now, we're all in limbo.
Just curious, so, in your conversation with, with Ed Valenzuela, was his take, so to speak, that he's not, he's not prone to discuss or renegotiate that contract because the county sends so much money our way? Oh, okay.
That sounds like the act.
I'm not, city manager, do you have a response to a process that would work best here?